I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting for the Iowa City City Council, April the 2nd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Solee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Before proceeding, I want to congratulate the University of Iowa's Women's Basketball Team for having had such an extraordinary season, and especially to praise Megan Gustafson for being named a First Team All-American and Big Ten Player of the Year. Bravo to her and her fellow Hawkeyes. All right. What a great season. Okay, item two, Student Leadership Awards. This involves three great students from Schimick Elementary. So Lucy, Megan, and Ella, would you come up, please?
Ella.
Eric.
You're right.
Yeah.
Let me stand between you, kind of like that. Okay. So help my memory, who's Ella?
Me.
All right, we're going to start with you, Ella. So we have three terrific students here from Schimick Elementary, and what I'm going to do is ask you each to read your speeches, and then when you're done, I will read the awards for each of you, and it looks like that. They're identical except for your names, okay? So.
Yeah.
And I'll mix and match them so that you don't know who's going to get what. Oh, I'm kidding. All right, so Ella, would you go first?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Thank you for choosing me for the Citizenship Award. I think being a good citizen means being kind, participating in community activities, and volunteering to help make your world a better place. The being kind and participating in your community is pretty straightforward. Most recently, for volunteering, I helped make weighted lap pads for kids with autism in low-income schools. I like volunteer projects like that because they are fun, they help people in need, and they help you meet people who also enjoy that kind of thing. Thank you again for letting me be here today.
Well done, very good. All right, and next, we're going to go with Lucy. Here, Lucy. All right, Lucy, so read your speech, would you?
To me, being a good citizen means to always be kind to everyone around you and that you always try and help your community. I have served on patrol this year since day one, and I've always performed my duties faithfully. I enjoy going to Book Buddies every Friday so I can read to Kyler, a really cute kindergartner. I try my hardest to pick up the classroom whenever I see something left on the floor and plug in the Chromebooks when I find them softly put away. This is part of what it means to be a good citizen. I believe this is why I was chosen for this Citizenship Award, so thank you all for recognizing me.
Well done, great speech. And last, Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Medemeyer. I am in fifth grade at Schimick Elementary. Inside of school, I participate in French horn. I'm the only fifth grader in student council. Outside of school, I participate in piano, soccer, ballet, girls on the run, and Girl Scouts. One of my favorite things to do is travel. I love national parks and someday hope to be a park ranger. I prefer to be nice, kind, and trustworthy because that is the right thing to do. I would like to thank my class, my teacher, Miss Cordova, my principal, Mr. Pizarro, and the Iowa City City Council for honoring me with this special award. Thank you.
What are some of the parks you've been to?
I don't know, there's too many to count.
Okay, well, there are a lot of them out there, and they're great parks. I went to one a little while ago called Big Bend National Park in southwestern Texas, right on the Rio Grande. It's a gorgeous place. All right, so let me, let me read these awards. Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Schimick Elementary as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize each of you as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, April 2019. All right, so Ella, there's yours, and Lucy, that would be yours. Double-check it. And Megan, that should be yours.
Thank you.
All right, I know there are very proud parents out here. Who's a parent? All right, that's great. You're doing a great job. Keep it up. You have wonderful kids here, and it's obvious they're doing really well. So bravo to you. Okay, so the sun's still out. Go on out there and enjoy the rest of the day, and thanks for coming.
Mommy!
Okay. Okay.
Mommy!
I think I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, that makes sense.
Okay, moving on to item three, Proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight. I'm only going to read three of them. There's one for Delta Sigma Theta, proclaiming Delta Sigma Theta Day, but there's no one here to accept it, so I will not read it. The first one has to do with Arbor Day. Whereas the coming of spring produces a renewal of interest in tree planting for beauty, shade, conservation, and many other purposes beneficial to all people. And whereas the observation of Arbor Day has long been characterized by the planting and preservation of trees. And whereas trees in Iowa City beautify our community, increase property values, reduce pollution, lower energy costs, and enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And whereas because trees absorb carbon dioxide and release oxygen, having a diverse and healthy tree population constitutes a major part of Iowa City's effort to mitigate against climate change. And whereas trees can provide natural air conditioning, the evaporation from a single tree can produce the cooling effect of 10 room-size air conditioners operating 20 hours a day. And whereas evergreen trees can be used to reduce wind speed and thus loss of heat from our homes in the winter by as much as 10 to 50 percent. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April the 26th, 2019 to be Arbor Day in Iowa City, and I hereby urge all citizens to participate in tree planting and preservation projects throughout the year. Julie, I think you're going to accept the proclamation, right?
Just very quickly, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for all your support of our Tree Canopy around the city. I get the chance tomorrow to travel with a couple of our staff to Weston-Wine to receive some state honors regarding this, and we're just excited that we have this asset here in the city. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next one has to do with National Fair Housing Month. Whereas April the 11th, 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin. And whereas the Iowa City Fair Housing Ordinance additionally prohibits discrimination because of age, creed, gender identity, marital status, presence or absence of dependents, public assistance, source of income, sexual orientation. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas the talents of grassroots and nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, and others must be combined to promote fair housing and equal opportunity. And whereas in recognition of National Fair Housing Month, the Human Rights Commission in collaboration with the Iowa Civil Rights Commission will host two complimentary fair housing trainings. For details, visit the city's website. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as National Fair Housing Month. So I think Sarah Barron is going to accept this proclamation, right?
Yes. Thanks very much. I'm Sarah Barron. I'm the Executive Director of the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. I'm actually here tonight because the Chair of our Human Rights Commission wasn't able to be here at the last minute to accept the award. But I want to take this opportunity to recognize, as it says in the proclamation, the work that the City of Iowa City, and in particular, our Office of Equity and Human Rights, am I saying that right? And our Human Rights Commission does on behalf of Fair Housing. It really does take a whole community of people, and Stephanie Bowers, Kristin Watson, and the members of the Human Rights Commission are very diligent in ensuring that Iowa City is not just maintaining the standards of the Federal Fair Housing Act, but working to be a leader in protecting folks from even additional forms of discrimination. And so we want to thank them for all the work they do to provide great access to safe and fair housing throughout the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Okay, and the last proclamation concerns marriage equality. Whereas from the very beginning of our nation, a bedrock principle of our society has been that we are all created equal. And whereas while not everyone has historically been treated equally in practice, as time passes, we persist in the quest to continually improve the condition of all. And whereas love is one of the most fundamental of human emotions, often publicly memorialized by marriage, which also confers societal protections and advantages not enjoyed by unmarried couples. And whereas, in the words of U.S. Supreme Court Justice Kennedy, quote, "No union is more profound than marriage, for it embodies the highest ideals of love, fidelity, devotion, sacrifice, and family. In forming a marital union, two people become something greater than once they were," unquote. And whereas on April the 3rd, 2009, the Iowa Supreme Court held in Varnum versus Bryan that the Iowa Constitution gave same-sex couples the right to marry, and slightly more than six years later, the U.S. Supreme Court in Obergefell versus Hodges found that same right in the United States Constitution. And whereas while many 10th anniversary celebrations will be held to commemorate the Iowa Supreme Court decision, including the One Iowa Gala celebration on April the 12th in Des Moines, the celebration in the hearts of those now able to marry, as well as their family and loved ones, is paramount. And whereas the freedom to marry the person one loves is an unalienable right, as sacred as life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April the 3rd, 2019 to be Marriage Equality Day. Sarah, I think it's a doubleheader, right?
Okay, just really quickly, I'm now just Sarah Barron lesbian, not Sarah Barron, Affordable Housing Coalition Director, but as one of the many people who will be celebrating a 10th wedding anniversary this year, I want to thank the city for recognizing this moment that was so important to so many of us, not just people who were given access to marriage through this decision, but all of our family, friends, neighbors who celebrate this day with us. So thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, which is items four through nine. We're going to consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended. Would someone make a motion, please?
Hold. Second.
Moved by Solee, second, and by Mims. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Solee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Community Comment. So anyone who would like to address us on any item that is not on the formal meeting agenda should please feel free to come up and please state your name. There's a big crowd here. I'd like to keep your comments brief, please, so please take not more than three minutes to express whatever's on your mind. Hi.
Hi, my name's Allison Janes, and the three of us are here as delegates from the Iowa City Deer Friends Group, and I'd like to read a letter from the Iowa State Director of the Humane Society of the United States, Preston Moore. Dear Council, last year I addressed the council and urged you to develop a long-term conflict mitigation plan as part of the city's attempt to manage its deer population. Today I ask you to do the same thing. Dear our wild neighbors forced by habitat loss into the spaces where humans now live, these gentle, herd animals are loved by many, but the disappearance of wild lands has led them into increasing conflicts with humans. They're often killed when they wander onto roads, endangering human lives as well, and they drive gardeners to distraction with their nibbling ways. They're often targeted for mass kills to reduce their numbers, but these are ineffective and unnecessary. There are ways to peacefully coexist with deer. Tolerance is needed when figuring out the best solution for your particular deer problems. Some damage is bound to happen where there are deer, but you can minimize the damage. Under mild browsing conditions, a good repellent may be all that's needed. Under heavy browsing conditions, you may need to limit your plants to the more deer-resistant varieties and use deer-proof fencing around your garden. I shared our deer conflict management and coexistence plan with the council last year, but I would ask again that the council review it. It is only 40 pages in length, only, and outlines ways that communities like Iowa City can work, again, in a long-term way, to develop plans to mitigate conflicts with deer. There's also a link to that in this letter. If you have any questions about our guide or anything else, I welcome the opportunity to have discussions on this topic with the city. And so we're here to reiterate that we're, as Iowa City Deer Friends, willing and able to work with you on long-term solutions that do not include the one thing that we are vehemently against, which is bow hunting within city limits. I would ask the council, I can approach with a hard copy of the letter and a short flyer statement, no bow hunting with our website, icdeerfriends.org, for you to peruse.
Great, thanks, Allison.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can you just hand that to our city clerk? Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second, and by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Hi, Harry.
Hi.
It's good to see you.
Two things. My name's Harry Olmstead, resident of Iowa City. First thing is, in your proclamation regarding fair housing, it was inadvertently missed that people with disabilities also have the right to housing. And so, somebody on staff. Second of all, some of you know I was recently hospitalized a couple of times, and I applaud the work that the Iowa City Fire Department did in getting me to the hospital, along with Johnson County Ambulance Service. When you're in a crisis situation, they were just really good about keeping me calm, make sure that I wasn't going to get worse. So I want to thank you all for hiring such fine fire chief, Jeff, and such fine crew that we have. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Harry. It's great to see you here tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Good? Okay. Hi, my name's Brooke Helt. I am with AAUW, which is a women's organization here on campus, and we are proposing an implication for bars to have signs on the back of bathroom doors with safety protocols as well as contact numbers for things like Night Ride, Safe Ride, as well as Yellow Cab Company here in Iowa City, as well as possibly like a sexual assault number or the non-emergency number for the Iowa City Police, just in case any woman or man is in an uncomfortable situation at a bar. And bathrooms tend to be the safest place that people go when they're uncomfortable. So along with that, I did some research, and in Des Moines, they have a thing called an angel shot, where you can go up to bartenders and say hello. I'd like an angel shot. If you want it neat, the bartender will escort you out. If you want it with ice, the bartender will call you a taxi, and if with a lime, the bartender will notify the police. So I think this would really help people who are in difficult situations, who maybe can't get away from their significant other that might be emotionally or physically abusing them in any sort of way, and it'll just pretty much keep everyone safe.
Great, thanks, Brooke. Could you, you're making a recommendation to us. Can you provide that in writing for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, maybe sent to, I think, the city manager?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can, where's Simon? Is he out there somewhere?
I can take him.
Would you get the contact information from Brooke, please?
Yes.
Great, okay. Anybody else want to address us on any item that's not on the formal meeting agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so we're going to move to item 11, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 11A is a comprehensive plan amendment to the North District Plan. This is a resolution to amend the North District Plan land use map from multifamily residential, eight to 13 dwelling units per acre, to low-medium mixed residential, eight to 13 dwelling units per acre, for approximately 24 acres, and from low-medium mixed residential, eight to 13 dwelling units per acre, to multifamily residential, eight to 13 dwelling units per acre, for approximately 24 acres. I'm going to open the public hearing. So let me say a little bit before you speak, and, or Danielle for that matter. So both this comprehensive plan amendment and the proposed rezoning for the Forest View area, which is, that's, the rezoning is the next item on our agenda, they're both very important, they both pertain to a very important and extremely complex proposed project. We're going to hold, we will hold public hearings on both of them, and we're in the first one right now, but speakers addressing the comprehensive plan amendment should feel free to comment on the proposed rezoning as well, if they want to. Because the project is so important and complex, many people might want to speak. I mean, I see about 80 or 90 people in the room right now. Given that, I would ask you to limit your comments to not more than three minutes. If you want to say more about the proposed rezoning, you will have an opportunity to do so during the public hearing concerning the rezoning, which will take place right after we go through this comprehensive plan amendment. Okay, with that, let me turn things over to, I don't know, Danielle, Anne, Danielle?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sizman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you've indicated, this is a complex topic, both of these two agenda items related to Forest View. So this evening, Anne will be presenting the staff reports to you in much the same format that the Planning and Zoning Commission received. So I'll turn it over to Anne.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Evening, Anne.
So this is a proposed amendment to the North District Plan's land use map. The North District Plan was adopted in 2001. This is a map as it was originally adopted in 2001. Here's the area that we're looking at. In 2001, this area was identified as appropriate for single-family and conservation design. The plan also acknowledged the existing Forest View Mobile Home Park that was in existence, and the Haywood Apartments as multifamily residential. In 2016, the applicants proposed an amendment to the North District Plan. Based on what they were proposing, a comprehensive plan amendment was needed due to the proposed change in land use from lower-density residential to commercial and higher-density multifamily. This was based on a concept plan that was provided that identified a hotel use along North Dubuque Street, single-family towards the center of the site, and multifamily toward the west end of the project site. In August of 2017, the city council adopted an amendment to the North District Plan, and this amendment changed the land use map from low-density residential to commercial along North Dubuque Street and I-80, low-medium mixed residential and multifamily residential, both at a density of eight to 13 dwelling units per acre. The map shown here is the current future land use map for the North District based on the adopted amendment in 2007. This amendment also added several goals to the North District Plan related to this area of the city. The goals generally addressed the relocation of the Forest View Mobile Home Park residents, preservation of the scenic North Dubuque corridor, and then buffering commercial and multifamily development from existing single-family. In February of 2018, applications were submitted for a proposed rezoning and preliminary plat for this area. Over several months, the applicants worked with city staff on the concept. During those discussions, staff recommended changes to the initial concept presented at the time of the 2017 comprehensive plan amendment. These changes include, included moving the hotel further west, away from North Dubuque Street, and this change resulted in moving the single-family development further west as well. So with the current concept, the hotel is south of I-80, the single-family is toward the west end of the project site, and the multifamily is at the middle of the project site. Due to these staff-driven changes in the concept that were originally presented as part of the 2017 North District Plan Amendment, staff is now recommending an update to the future land use map to reflect these changes. Staff received an application to modify the future land use map in September, and here's the land use exhibit that was included with the application. This proposal aligns with the current concept of single-family on the west end of the project site and multifamily toward the center. So the map on the left shows the current future land use map for the North District, and the map on the right is the proposed revision that is before you tonight. The proposed amendment only adjusts the land use map. It would carry forward the specific housing, transportation, and scenic corridor goals associated with the 2017 amendment, and it would accurately reflect the current land use proposal. When reviewing comprehensive plan amendments, there are two criteria that need to be looked at. The first is that circumstances have changed and/or additional information or factors have come to light such that the proposed amendment is in the public interest. Additional factors have come to light after the 2017 plan amendment was adopted. First, the location of the hotel was not ideal due to the plan amendment's goals related to keeping the North Dubuque Street scenic corridor, and the shift in the hotel resulted in it being close to the proposed single-family community. There was concern from both staff and the applicant that it could impact livability. Therefore, the single-family shifted further west. The current proposal provides a better transition between the existing single-family to the west, and since the lower-scale housing type is being proposed at the west end of the project Criteria two is that the proposed amendment will be compatible with other policies or provisions of the comprehensive plan. This amendment supports several North District Plan principles, including providing opportunities for new housing development that complements existing neighborhoods, retaining the predominantly single-family residential character of the neighborhood, and locating higher-density housing closer to commercial areas. In addition, the 2017 plan amendment included a goal related to multifamily residential being adjacent to Mackinac Village would need to incorporate design standards. The current proposal shifts the multifamily away from the existing single-family and places the proposed single-family community next to the existing single-family community. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this comprehensive plan amendment, which again is an amendment to the land use map, swapping the location of the multifamily residential with the location of the low-medium mixed residential land use designation. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Anne. Any questions for Anne?
from the existing single-family and places the proposed single-family community next to the existing single-family community. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this comprehensive plan amendment, which again is an amendment to the land use map, swapping the location of the multifamily residential with the location of the low-medium mixed residential land use designation. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Anne. Any questions for Anne? I'm not hearing a lot of questions. So, thanks. I may ask you to come back up here in a second, I don't know. Would anyone else like to address this topic? This is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Hi there.
My name is Brian DeCosta. To be clear, I own two houses in the proposed area. One on Knollwood Lane, which is near the entrance from Dubuque Street. And the other one is in the Mackinac Village. At 747 Mission Point Road. It's the Mission Point Road property that I have an issue with. It's very rare that you see a trailer court moved into a neighborhood. Usually trailer courts are built out, and then the area gets filled in around it, and people decide what they want to build around that or move into that area. And talking to the developer, he explained to me that it was the city's idea to make the move of the trailer court. Now, the trailer court originally was close to my, the first home I referenced on Knollwood Lane. And it was there when I bought my place, and I had no problem with it. And the slight moving of it, just a slight shift of it originally, didn't really affect anybody. It was kind of out in the woodlands area. But now, the city, for the reason that they wanted to move it away from the hotel, moved it into our neighborhood. This is just completely inappropriate. This is what this, this is what the city is here for, to protect, to protect the residents of the cities from developers, and in this case, from the city. It's the city's decision to move a trailer court into my neighborhood. Why would you guys feel if we moved it into your neighborhood? I don't think anybody here would go for that. It just seems to be completely inappropriate. And if you don't want it near the hotel, then don't put a hotel in. Whatever you need to do, you shouldn't shift the trailer court into a neighborhood. And the road's not meant for the traffic. I would look right out my window at it. Everybody in the neighborhood over the last several months, it's funny because I actually was missing a meeting. And I said, hey, am I going to, am I going to miss anything in the meeting? And he was aware of my house on Knollwood Lane. He said, no, nothing's going to impact you on this one. And I was out of town. And it's when the announcement was made that the trailer court was getting shifted, which was the same week that I bought this other place. So, I missed one of the most critical meetings I could have ever missed. And by the way, everybody, everybody seems to know it in the neighborhood because everything is, if you look at all the sales in that neighborhood, they've been off the charts. It's greatly affecting the values of that neighborhood. And it's just wrong. You guys are supposed to protect us. If you don't want to, if you don't want a trailer court next to your hotel, figure out something else, or eliminate the trailer court. But I know that's a really hard political decision, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? And please remember to keep your comments to about three minutes so we can make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to go now or later, so I'm just going to go.
Go now.
All right. My name is Ashley Mangan, and I live in Mackinac Village. I am here tonight to share my voice in the pending North Dubuque Street rezoning. To put it simply, my family and I are not in favor of the plan that was approved by the Zoning and Planning Committee. We have several concerns about the impending development on North Dubuque Street. Our first concern is the sheer increase in traffic volume. After attending the Neighborhood Traffic Meeting held in February, this only intensified our concern. Our concerns are for the safety of our children. Not only do our children live in the neighborhood, but several others do as well. The traffic report mentioned the increased traffic flow and also allowing people to park on both sides of the street, which will cause an issue to be able to properly see kids and people in general riding bikes and walking in the neighborhood. We fear our roads will not be safe for the people living in the neighborhood. We are also concerned about the modular homes being placed off of Flint Street. There are way too many homes being placed in that small area. Also, at the last Planning and Zoning Meeting, it was mentioned that anything to be built in that area was to be a continuation of what was already in place. I question how modular homes are a continuation of what has already been built. Also, there was an article on March 28th in the Des Moines Register referencing how trailers lose instant value once put on the lot. It was also mentioned that mobile homes depreciate in value like a car, and it doesn't take long for them to acquire problems. Is this the same case for modular homes? This is a worry to us because we are concerned, like others, about losing value in our homes. We are also very concerned about how the modular homes will be maintained. The maintenance of the current Forest View has not been a priority, and we do not want the same for this pending new development. The whole fifteen-year process of obtaining the modular homes is not an experiment we want our property value to be dependent on. We understand and empathize the need for finding homes for people living in Forest View. What is wrong with rebuilding their homes where they are at now? If low-income housing and housing in general is a main concern to the developers, then we question why they are simply not creating all mixed-home housing. Another concern we have is about the commercial properties being brought into the neighborhood. While we don't see it being a necessity, we are also incredibly disappointed in how these developments would drastically change the entrance into Iowa City. Currently, Iowa City has a beautiful and unique entry into town, one of the only cities that isn't bombarded by fast-food restaurants, hotels, and retail. We truly hope you reconsider your plan and do what is best for Iowa City and not just what is best for a developer from Des Moines. Lastly, we are concerned about the displacement of wildlife in our area and how they will be rehomed. In Mackinac Village and anyone living off of Foster Road, we are flooded with deer, as we heard earlier. I can only foresee how this problem will only get worse. Deer are not the only species of animals that will be displaced and trying to find homes in our yards. What is the plan for these animals? And how will the city and the developers help preserve them and find them homes? When you are considering the plan, we hope you are considering what's best for the community of Iowa City.
Thank you, thank you, Ashley. Anyone else? Hey, you've already been up here twice.
I know, not my fault. I don't mean to be triple dipping, but the Affordable Housing Coalition does want to weigh in. With you all, we have spoken with Planning and Zoning as well. We're strongly in favor of the comprehensive plan amendment for several reasons. The first of which is that the residents of Forest View are advocating for this plan. They have worked very closely with the developer to ensure that their needs are going to be met. We know that affordable housing continues to be quite a challenge, not just in Iowa City, but across the country. And the kind of creative rezoning that is proposed through this plan for this, this whole area of land, including the commercial with the lower-income housing with other development, is exactly the kind of creative solution that we need to embrace in order to make creating more affordable housing opportunities a smart business decision, in addition to being the right thing to do. You will hear from residents who are concerned about property values, or who say they are concerned about property values. And we have mountains of research showing that homes that are located near lower-income housing developments do not experience a decrease in home value. So, while that is a commonly-held belief, it is not based in evidence. And so, I want to reassure people who are concerned about that that that's the case. And also encourage you not to make your decision based on something that is actually a myth and not true. Those will be just a few of the things I'll say. I'm sure you'll hear lots of other great points from other folks today. But before we got the tide going too far in the direction of people standing up to say they had problems with this idea, I just wanted to stand up and wholeheartedly applaud Moving For with this project as proposed. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening to everyone.
Mi nombre es Margarita Baltazar.
My name is Margarita Baltazar.
Presidente de la Asociación de Forest View.
I'm president of the Forest View Tenants Association.
Yo creo que ya nos conocemos. Hemos estado muchas veces aquí en frente con ustedes.
I think we all know each other. I've been here many times in front of you before.
Y como ustedes saben, llevamos más de tres años trabajando en este proyecto.
As you know, we've been working on this project for more than three years.
Ustedes saben que nosotros no estábamos excluidos en el proyecto, pero trabajamos y ahora estamos sentados con los desarrolladores cada mes y hemos trabajado conjuntamente para lograr este proyecto y más que nada para las casas de bajos recursos para Forest View.
As you know, we didn't begin this, this journey together, but over time, we began to work very closely with the developers. And over those years of meeting together and planning together, we've been able to achieve this plan that we're putting before you today, and including the affordable housing component.
Bueno, yo soy madre soltera, madre de una niña de siete años.
I'm a single mother of a daughter that has, it's seven years old. She's seven years old.
Hevivido por más de trece años en Forest View.
I've lived for more than thirteen years at Forest View.
Mi trabajo me queda cerca.
My work is close by.
Este, la escuela de mi niña.
And, y cerca de la escuela. Uh huh, and close to the school that my daughter attends.
Conozco a mis vecinos.
I know my neighbors.
Somos vecinos de muchos años.
We're longtime neighbors.
Somos vecinos que nos ayudamos uno al otro.
We're neighbors who we can count on to help each other.
Y lo único que quieres es que queremos conservar nuestro vecindario, pero con casas mejores porque estas casas que tenemos ahorita ya están a punto de caerse.
So, the main thing I want to say is that I want to preserve this important neighborhood, but preserve it with better-quality houses. Because the houses that we have are at the point of falling apart.
Ejemplo, si yo no puedo llegar temprano a recoger a mi niña por cinco minutos, seis minutos, una vecina mía, otro vecino puede recoger a mi niña por cinco minutos. Somos hermanos y nos ayudamos unos al otro.
I always know as part of the Forest View neighborhood that if I'm five minutes late to pick up my daughter, one of my other neighbors who I know well and she knows well will be able to pick her up. We're a close-knit community.
Somos personas que trabajamos dignamente para ganarnos y sostener a nuestra familia.
We're families that work with dignity to maintain and sustain our families.
Y como personas merecemos tener una vivienda digna de mejor calidad.
And as people, we deserve to have fair and affordable housing that's good quality.
Y estamos aquí para soportar el proyecto.
We're here to support this project.
Porque es nuestro proyecto.
Because it's our project.
Nosotros sabemos de este proyecto.
We, we know this project inside and out. We know this project well.
Nosotros conocemos este proyecto. Hemos trabajado durante tres años en este proyecto.
We know this project because we've worked on this project for the last three years.
No es nuevo para nosotros.
It's not new for us.
Y aquí está Forest View. Hay mucha gente de Forest View que durante tres años han estado esperando ese sueño de tener nuevas casas.
And Forest View is here. Many people from Forest View are here because we've been working hard, you know, over these past years to achieve our dream of having quality housing at Forest View.
Estamos entusiasmados. Estamos aquí apoyando el proyecto. Nuestros niños están en el salón, pudiendo estar en casa durmiendo, pero ellos también están ilusionados de tener una casa más digna, de mejor condición.
So, we're enthusiastically supporting the project. Our children are here in the room. They could have been home taking a nap or sleeping. But they're excited about this ideal of, of having quality housing.
Lo único que quería decirles, que ya es hora de echar para adelante este proyecto. Hemos esperado tanto tiempo.
The only last thing I want to say is that it's time to move forward this project. We've waited so much time.
Porque no sabemos cuánto tiempo más nuestras casas van a estar de pie.
And we don't know how much longer our houses will still be standing.
Se llega a destruir, no sé a dónde voy a ir con mi hija. No sé cómo moverme, qué hacer, es una incertidumbre.
If they fall apart or if this doesn't move forward, I don't know where I'm going to go with my daughter. So, it's, it's an incredible uncertainty that I face.
Entonces, solo pido que se toquen el corazón y piense que somos personas que merecemos un hogar digno.
So, I hope that your heart is touched by the idea that we're human beings who deserve dignified housing.
Diría más, pero yo creo que me estoy pasando de tiempo. Gracias.
I would say more, but I think I'm going over my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. Anyone else? Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. I'm Bill Gerhardt. I'm the president of Iowa State Building Trades and a resident in the Iowa City area since 1969. I'm here to give you an update. We have been working with the Forest View Tenants Association, the Center for Worker Justice, and the Carpenters Union. One, to make sure our top priority is getting the tenants up there relocated to affordable, better housing. And two, to make sure that the construction up there is done in the right way. And we've met last fall with Blackford Development, I guess it's North Dubuque Development, developers, and reached, discussed several items. I think reached an agreement on those. We just recently put that together in what we called a letter of intent to send to them so they could look it over. And we'd have a firmer commitment on how we want that job redone. Some of the items in that letter of intent included the fact that the residents up there would have an opportunity to work on the construction project if they wanted to. If they didn't have the skills needed, we would have a pre-apprenticeship program available to teach them the skills. Two, the wages that would be paid would be based on the USDOL prevailing wage. And three, that they, the subcontractors they use and anyone else in the job would have the same criteria for the, for the wages and putting the residents to work. So, we're in the process. And we sent the letter of intent off, and we're waiting to get it back. So, for those that know me, I don't often quote Ronald Reagan, but in this case, I will trust but verify. That's what we're up to now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, mi nombre es Norma Pulgarín.
My name is Norma.
Estoy hablando por mí, por algunos de mis vecinos que no pudieron estar aquí porque tienen que trabajar.
I'm speaking for myself and some of my neighbors who couldn't be here because they have to work.
Nosotros queremos apoyar realmente este proyecto.
We really want to support this project.
Porque pensamos que es bueno también para la ciudad, la economía. Y también, sobre todo, porque nos ofrece a nosotros una casa digna.
We think this project is really good for the city and for the economy and for the residents because it offers us housing with dignity.
Muchos de nuestros hijos ni siquiera tienen un cuarto donde dormir. Tienen que dormir en la sala.
Many of our children don't even have a bedroom to sleep in. They have to sleep in the living room.
Y aparte, muchos de nosotros quisiéramos poder tener la oportunidad de una casa, pero a muchos por la edad o por el... Ajá, no tenemos crédito por el bajo sueldo. Porque ganamos muy poco, no nos dan la posibilidad.
Many of us have wanted to have a home, but because of maybe our age or our credit scores or because we're low-income, we haven't been able to achieve that in the past.
En mi caso, yo tengo un hijo que ya va a ir a college y pues realmente necesitamos más espacio y una casa digna, sinceramente, porque nuestras casas están muy viejas.
In my case, I have a son going to college, and I really need more space. Many, we just need dignified space. Spaces with dignity.
Yo solamente, para terminar, quiero decir que tenemos demasiado tiempo esperando. Son tres años y la verdad, ya estamos desesperados. Nuestras casas están muy viejas.
The last thing I just want to say is that we've been waiting to see this move through for a long time, more than three years. And, and many of our houses are old.
Y quisiéramos hacer algo para componerlo, pero ya sería dinero desperdiciado.
And of course, we would like to fix them, but at the moment, not knowing the future, that would be wasted money to invest in them.
Así es que me encantaría si ustedes, por favor, apelaran a su lado bueno y tuvieran la generosidad de apoyar este proyecto.
So, we would like for you to approve this project and, and to have the generosity of approving this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, do you want to speak?
Oops.
Good evening.
That's quite an address.
My name is Margarita Rodriguez, and I got here back in 1990. And when I first got here, I saw a sign saying rent to own. I said, "Oh, my God, I'm going to try that." I called a number, and once I gave my name, Margarita Rodriguez, and I told him a little bit about myself. He said, "I'm sorry, you're not qualified." Now, I'm getting the second opportunity with Forest View Trailer Park, which I've been there for 29 years. I have lived in 153, '72, '91, and now I live in 121. As you can see, I'm not going anywhere. I've been living there for quite a while. I have my kids. They all grew up there, and they went to elementary, junior high, and high school. They're all gone, and they're all in college, and they're married. Now, I got grandkids. I call them Gigi, God-given son, because I love them a lot. And of course, like I said, we have been there. I've been there for quite a while, and so I have my kids. But it's now time to have our glass not halfway done, but fill it up. Let's continue with our project. You know, you're all up there, and you all have a choice. And the choice is well-done. I want it to be in our favor, because, like I said before, nothing has given to me. I have worked hard, and I have been working, and I think it's time for me to retire and kick back, like a lot of people. Enjoy life with my grandkids. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Margarita. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Roberto Carrasco. I've been living in Forest View for seven, eight years now. I mean, I know that some people really complain about safety for other kids, right? Before, like, back in the day, not before the peninsula neighborhood had been built, I used to drive my bike there all the time before all those buildings become, right? So now, I see the difference, right? But I used to, I've been living there for a very long time, and I don't really see any dangers on that area. Some other people say it's not safe for the kids, right? But before, peninsula neighborhood had been built, it was a nice place. You can go ride, go fishing back there. It was great, you know? But now, I mean, it's been changed now, so I don't, I can't see what's different that's saying it's going to be not safety. It's been not safety, okay? It's been changed. So, I don't, I can't see what the difference is going to be now building something else there. You know what I'm saying? So, what I'm saying, they complain about people, more cars coming through. They're speeding there. They don't know what 25 speed limit is, you know? And I'm saying, I drive there every day, so I see them sometime with no lights on. They don't really care. So, I mean, we're going to be fair, and we'll be honest, you know? So, we're going to see our part, too. So, I've been like, I'm saying, I wouldn't usually, I've been living there, and I mean, I had no problems with anybody. I never heard, like, "Please close the trailer park" for some reason, like, no liberty happens once, right? But I mean, like, I haven't seen from this part, like, from the area where we're at, it's like, like I said, not safety. So, you know, I mean, I live there because the thing is, my kids go to school down like a horseman, but now they move because they're fixing the horseman. So, it's a good place to stay because, like, the kids have more... We are more closer to the school. If something happened, we cannot drive that far, like, you're too close to us, right? So, it's like, from my point, too, like, neighbors that we live there, we look at each other, you know, they help us each other. Like, something happened, they come help us, take a look, like some other ladies say about that, you know? It's just true. So, like, they say about the safety problems is, it's been changed. It's not changing now. It's been changed, okay? So, I mean, this is what I want to say. We'll be fair, fair with everybody, you know? I mean, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. I can go ahead and close the public hearing, right? That's not a problem for this. I'm going to close the public hearing? All right, so, the question for our council is basically whether we want to vote on this tonight or not. And let me explain a little bit, both for the council and for the public. So, we have received a substantial number of petitions expressing opposition to the proposed rezoning. Our staff needs to calculate, it needs to go through those petitions and calculate whether there is sufficient opposition, according to the law we work under, whether there's sufficient opposition to warrant invoking what we call a supermajority requirement for the rezoning. And a supermajority requirement means six out of seven or more council members would have to vote in favor of the rezoning for it to pass. We don't know if we are in that position yet. Our staff will have to calculate. So, we're going to, in a few minutes, we will open the public hearing for the rezoning, but we will not act on it tonight. We will continue the public hearing to our next meeting, which is March, or April the 23rd, and then probably vote that night. So, the question for our council members is, do we want to just continue this public hearing to April the 23rd and vote on it that night? Or do you want to vote?
Mayor, you mean defer the comprehensive... You mean defer the comprehensive plan amendment?
Yeah, because we just closed the public hearing. That's right, thank you. Do we want to defer the vote on the comprehensive plan amendment till April the 23rd, or vote on it tonight?
That is not... Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't see any reason to defer it.
I agree.
Me too. I agree not to defer it because this is, you know, we have nothing to do with that rezoning. Then we can just move forward for this and defer the rezoning.
I understand, so...
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so, we will vote on it tonight. So, I've already closed the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move second.
Move by Sully, second by MEMS. Discussion.
To me, what's before us tonight is...
Sorry, I should say, I should say one other thing. Sorry for interrupting. A supermajority is necessary if the council chooses to vote against the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that correct?
If you are voting no, it will take a supermajority to do that.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. To me, when I look at what's in front of us tonight with the change in the comp plan, this is a change in the map for the land use, essentially flipping where the single-family homes versus where the multifamily are. And when you look at what we typically do in terms of where we have commercial and what we put close to commercial and where, what we butt up against other single-family, I think the flipping of these makes a lot of sense in that regard. So, I will be supporting the comp plan amendment.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Yeah, the staff laid out the criteria, and I think the amendment meets the criteria for approving the amendment.
Yeah, I agree, too. This is pretty good, and we should move forward in supporting it.
I agree, and I'd like to explain why I agree, if that's okay. You know, when I see this project, you know, it's hard actually not to get emotional about this. What I see is a beautiful part of our community, both those against and those for, coming together to work hard and to address an incredibly complicated land use issue. Obviously, we have the zoning that's going to come up, but here, we're talking about the comprehensive plan. And to get the sort of buy-in that we've had on this comprehensive plan proposal on potentially, I think, one of the most complicated projects that we've probably seen in the last 50 years easily. And there's so many different ways that this could have been derailed. There's so many different ways that it could have gone in the wrong direction. There were a few bumps along the road. But I just want to extend my complete gratitude in terms of what the developer and what the owner has done, Mr. Cole, as well as the residents in terms of the hard work that was put in in consulting with the staff on this comprehensive plan amendment. I think this has so much potential. And in terms of some of the questions about land use and some of the concerns, I think once this project goes into place, if we approve it, if we get the supermajority, I think you're going to find just the opposite. This is going to be an asset. And I think in terms of this comprehensive plan amendment, this is going to allow us to do that. So, I am going to be in support of this comprehensive plan amendment.
Bruce, do you want to say anything?
So, I've listened to everyone tonight, and I really do appreciate everybody coming up and giving their thoughts. I've read emails on some opposing. I haven't seen any about supporting at this point. But what I, I think what I want to say is, it is a great opportunity for essentially Iowa City, from my perspective. I came to Iowa City 25 years ago, and when I think of Iowa City, I think of a place where people really do, at the bottom of everything, they love each other. When you're talking about being emotional, I've sat here all emotional. I'm going to keep it together. But for me, one thing we know, change is constant. And so, with change, there is always pros and cons, things we would like to do different that may not happen the way that we would like. So, what I am going to do is definitely support this plan, the comp plan, and we'll see what happens when the rezoning piece comes with the supermajority.
Just to be clear, we don't know if we need a supermajority yet on the...
If we need that, yes.
I just wanted to build a little bit on my support comment. I also am very emotional about this, as Mazaher knows and many of you in the room know. I've been a part of this group since the very beginning, three years ago, since day one, and saw these folks with their fears. They had no idea what was going to happen to them or their homes or their families. And it came on the tails of the terrible Rose Oak situation that we were going through, and those people not knowing. But this developer and this landowner, there were some rocky roads, but over time, worked very closely with them, and they formed the Tenants Association, which was wonderful. It's stronger together. And they worked out this plan, and these are beautiful people. I can understand your concerns, this whole "not in my backyard" philosophy, but I wouldn't mind having them in my backyard. And as some folks know, I lived in mobile homes for a number of years. And there's, it is a community, and people are like family. And you will find that, too, and I just definitely am supportive of this.
All right. Me, too. Anybody else want to say anything?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Te?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11B, rezoning south of Interstate 80, west of North Dubuque Street and east of Mackinac Drive, commonly referred to as Forest View. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 73.15 acres of property located south of Interstate 80, west of North Dubuque Street and north of Foster Road from interim development, single-family residential IDRS, low-density, single-family residential RS5, low-density, multifamily residential RM12, and high-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay, OPD RS12 to OPD RS12. Is that right? Is that, can you read that, Kelly? It says from OPD RS12 to OPD RS12.
A portion of the area is already zoned, OPD RS12, so that will remain the same.
Okay, thank you. For 45.58 acres and highway commercial with a planned development overlay, OPD CH1 for 23.83 acres. I'm going to open the public hearing. So, Ann, please, before you start. So, this is the second public hearing, right? So, if you want to address this topic, please feel free to do so after Ann speaks and walks us through the proposed rezoning. So, she's going to describe what's being requested and what conditions the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended. Following that, I'll invite members of the audience to speak. And again, I ask you to keep your comments to not more than three minutes because I think a lot of people have something to say. And like I said earlier, we do not yet know whether a supermajority will be required, so we're going to continue the public hearing. After we hear from everyone, we'll continue the public hearing and defer action to our April 23rd meeting. Okay, is everybody clear about that? I hope you are. Hi, Ann, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let you know what I'm going to speak about tonight, I'm going to provide a high-level overview of the entire development. This is a planned development overlay rezoning, so I'm going to discuss what an OPD means, as well as the sensitive areas that are on the site. I'll discuss the proposed zoning. I'll discuss the OPD review criteria that need to be looked at when we look at OPD rezonings. I'll also cover all of the requested waivers that the applicant has requested, and then discuss consistency with the comprehensive plan. Here's an aerial of the project site. Again, it's located south of Interstate 80, west of North Dubuque Street. This map provides an overview of the development and outlines the proposed land uses, conservation areas, and some of the proposed transportation improvements. The main entrance to the proposed development is off of North Dubuque Street via a new public roadway, Forest View Drive. The land uses proposed off of North Dubuque Street and the eastern portion of Forest View Drive are commercial, shown in the map on red. The applicant is proposing a gas station and market on Lot 1. Lots 2, 3, and 4 along North Dubuque Street are anticipated to be developed as eating and drinking establishments with drive-throughs. The applicant plans to have a hotel south of Interstate 80, as well as some office uses. On lots 9, 10, and 11, which are south of Forest View Drive, those areas are intended for lower-scale neighborhood commercial uses. Heading further west along Forest View Drive, lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all proposed multifamily lots. Lot 14 is intended for senior housing development. Heading further west along Forest View Drive and located at the eastern edge, or western edge, excuse me, of the project site is the proposed manufactured housing or single-family home community. The applicant is proposing to relocate the existing tenants of Forest View to this area or elsewhere along, elsewhere in the project. There are also many sensitive features, woodlands and wetlands, on the project site. The areas shaded in green with the green hatching are preservation areas. These will have conservation easements, and these are areas that are identified for preservation of existing woodlands, wetlands. Outlet D, which is located south of the proposed single-family community, is a proposed dry stormwater management basin, and this is also proposed as communal, private, open space for the single-family community. Additional access to the development is provided off of Laura Drive on the east side. Also, the project proposes to extend Algonquin Road north and Flint Drive to the east. Again, this rezoning is... Also, the project proposes to extend Algonquin Road north and Flint Drive to the east. Again, this rezoning is a planned development overlay. This is required due to the sensitive features as well as the proposed manufactured housing that's being proposed. OPD rezonings allow flexibility in the proposed redevelopment. Clustering of uses to preserve sensitive areas is allowed, as well as a variety of housing types. Also, OPDs allow applicants to request waivers from development standards. There are several waivers that have been requested as part of this rezoning. I will touch on those toward the end of the presentation. In terms of sensitive features, the project site is heavily wooded. It contains a total of just over 36 acres of woodlands. The vast majority of these woodlands, over 30 acres, are located on the proposed residential lots. The remainder, just under 6 acres, exist on the proposed commercial lots. This table shows a summary of the existing woodlands, the woodlands that would be impacted by the development, and the woodlands that would be preserved compared to the retention requirements in the zoning code. The project meets the retention requirement for the commercial area but not the residential area. Our zoning code does allow mitigating the loss of woodlands through planting of additional trees, so the applicant is proposing to mitigate the loss of those woodlands through planting 828 additional trees on the project site. The applicant has submitted plans that outline the location of those restoration trees, which have been reviewed by the city forester. And the city forester generally agrees with the location of those mitigation trees. The applicant has also proposed a monitoring plan for the restoration trees that will include the submission of an annual report. Staff is recommending that the details of this monitoring plan be worked out as part of a development agreement. So in addition to the woodlands that will be preserved, there's also a 40-foot wooded area along North Dubuque Street that will remain unimpacted. And there's also woodland buffer and additional screening between Lot 1 and Outlet A. Staff is recommending a condition as part of the rezoning that that 40-foot area along North Dubuque Street remain unimpacted. In terms of wetlands, the project site contains just under 1 acre of wetlands. 36% of the wetlands will be impacted by the development. The applicant has submitted U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit indicating that the city may consider filling in this wetland. The permit has been approved by both the Iowa DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. This map shows the existing zoning on the project site. This area here is the area that's currently designated OPD RS12. The area along the eastern edge is zoned single-family. Majority of the site is zoned interim development, and there's a small portion of multifamily development that's zoned down here. This shows the proposed rezoning. On the orange areas on the map would be rezoned to high-density, single-family residential with the planned development overlay. And the blue area would be rezoned to highway commercial with the planned development overlay. Although the base zoning designation is proposed as highway commercial, the applicant is proposing a hybrid zoning district that incorporates some aspects of the neighborhood commercial zone, so I'd like to kind of go through the proposed hybrid commercial zoning designation. The lots 5, 6, 7, and 8 that are just south of Interstate 80 here, the base zone will be highway commercial. However, any development would be subject to standards related to large retail uses. These address things like visual interest and articulation as well as different building materials to reduce the perception of the mass of the building. There's also consideration for facades and requiring attractive entrances such as large storefront windows. There's also proposed conditions in the conditional zoning agreement that deal with signage and building materials for the commercial areas. Lots 9, 10, and 11, which are located south of Forest View Drive, would also be zoned commercial highway, but they would be subject to our neighborhood commercial zoning regulations. The neighborhood commercial zone limits the scale, building placement, addresses sidewalk connectivity, addresses parking and loading requirements, as well as mechanical screening. So any development on those lots would be subject to those additional requirements as well as the proposed conditions related to signage and building materials. Lastly, the lots along Dubuque Street, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, would also be subject to the CN zoning regulations with some exceptions mainly related to the proposed drive-throughs and the building frontages. The proposed development does not meet those standards, so the development would be allowed to be built as is shown on the plans. In reviewing this rezoning application, the council has several criteria that need to be considered since it's an OPD rezoning. Those criteria relate to density and design, existing streets and utilities, adverse effects on light, views, air, property values, and privacy, land uses and building types, and whether those will be in the public interest. So I'm going to go through each of those criteria now. The first related to density and design. The density that's being proposed is in line with the comprehensive plan and the RS12 zoning designation. The total project is around 13 dwelling units per acre. The multifamily lots are a higher density, around 33 dwelling units, and the single-family lots are around eight dwelling units per acre. In terms of design, staff has recommended some conditions related to design standards. The single-family would have to have clearly defined main entrances. There is requirements related to building materials and signage, as well as the additional commercial design standards that I just discussed. And any multifamily development would need to meet the city's multifamily design standards. This is an image of the proposed manufactured housing that was submitted by the applicant. Next, in terms of land use, mass, and scale, the project proposes the lowest intensity development at the western edge, so it's the single-family that would be located next to the existing single-family neighborhood. And again, the applicant is proposing to relocate the tenants of the Forest View Mobile Home Park, and staff is recommending as a condition of approval of the rezoning that the applicant execute an affordable housing agreement with the city that would need to be reviewed and approved by the city council. Toward the center of the site, the applicant has proposed four multifamily lots. The applicant has proposed two buildings on Lot 15, three buildings on Lot 14, which is a proposed senior housing development, and one building each on lots 12 and 13. The highest intensity uses, the commercial uses, are located south of Interstate 80 and along North Dubuque Street. So in summary, the proposed land use is transitioned from lower intensity to higher intensity as you move east. In terms of open space, the plans show the designated areas for private open space. On the multifamily lots, the applicant has shown the square footage of private open space, and these areas are intended to provide seating, shade, and recreational areas. For the single-family community, the applicant has identified 1.65 acres of area to be used as active recreation and communal space. And there are also several outlets being proposed that would be conserved as woodlands, and that area totals nearly 19 acres. The city also has a public open space requirement. For the project, around 2.8 acres of public open space or an in-lufy would be provided. Currently, no public open space is proposed on-site. So this just shows the areas, again, for preservation, which would be identified in the green. And then the proposed communal open space for the single-family community would be on Outlet D. And this shows the proposed open space for the multifamily lots. It's just kind of hard to see, but it's located in this general area for Lot 15, over here for Lot 14, and then south of the building on Lot 20. In terms of traffic circulation, there is a proposed new public street, which would be Forest View Drive, which provides secondary access to Peninsula and Mackinac Village and would also benefit those communities in the case of an emergency. The access is along North Dubuque Street. The applicant is also proposing to extend Algonquin Drive and Flint Drive. In terms of sidewalks and trails, 10-foot and 5-foot sidewalks would be installed along Forest View Drive and Algonquin Drive. 5-foot sidewalks would be throughout the rest of the area. And there's also a 10-foot trail proposed along North Dubuque Street. In terms of transit, there's a transit stop at Algonquin Wood Road and Foster Road, and that is walkable from the manufactured housing community. The applicant's worked with the consultant and completed a traffic study. In terms of existing traffic counts, on North Dubuque Street, it's anywhere between 22,000 and 24,000 vehicles a day. At full buildout of the proposed projects, an additional 15,000 vehicles per day would be added. This is a significant amount of traffic. However, the study does show that with the proposed transportation improvements, the system would be able to run at an acceptable level. Due to the proximity of the development to the I-80 interchange, both Iowa DOT and the city were interested in the project's impact on the interchange. So without the development, service levels near the interchange begin to fail in 2046, and this is just due to annual community growth. With the development, the service levels fail around 2035. So in short, the proposed development would accelerate needed improvements at the interchange by around 11 years. So the improvements that are being proposed include Foster Forest View Drive being extended across North Dubuque Street to the frontage road, dedicated north and southbound left turn lanes onto Forest View Drive, dedicated southbound right turn lane, and dual eastbound left turn lanes onto North Dubuque Street. In terms of stormwater, the applicant has submitted a preliminary stormwater management report. They're proposing three types of stormwater management: detention basins, onsite underground stormwater storage, and stormwater best management practices. Staff does recommend a condition that upon final plat approval, the owner execute a subdividers agreement that addresses the need for annual certification of private stormwater management systems. And this map here just shows the proposed locations of the stormwater management, which are identified on the map in blue. In terms of views, light, air, property values, and privacy, as I mentioned previously, the development does transition from single-family to multifamily to commercial. It also includes buffers and screens between existing single-family and new development. And also, there are several conditions, some of which I've mentioned before, related to the buffer along North Dubuque Street, and that the landscape buffer be maintained on the west side of the proposed single-family development. So this shows here the buffer that's being proposed along the west edge of the project as well as the additional landscape screen. Similarly, here, Outlet D provides a buffer, and the applicant is also proposing screening between the new development and the existing development. And then lastly, along North Dubuque Street, there's the 40-foot buffer, some additional screening identified, and then Outlet A, which would be a conservation area, and additional screening between Lot 1 and Outlet A. I'd also like to go through the waivers that the applicant is requesting. As part of planned development overlay rezonings, there is flexibility, and the applicant is allowed to request waivers from zoning regulations. So there's been requests to waive building height regulations, public right-of-way width, slot dimensions, and private open space, so I'll go through each of those. The first is building height. So in the RS12 zone, the maximum height is 35 feet, and the applicant is proposing some four- and five-story buildings. Lots 2, sorry, lots 12 and 13 have four-story buildings. Lot 14 has a four- and five-story building, and Lot 15 has a five-story building. The criteria that we use to identify if this is appropriate is whether or not at least 35% of net area must be free of buildings and parking, and the plans show that 44% of the net area is free of buildings and parking, so that criteria is met. In terms of the public right-of-way, the right-of-way standard is 60 feet, and the applicant is proposing that Cole Drive, Cole Drive is at the west end of the project site, and Flint Drive be 50 feet in width. The existing Flint Drive stub here is 50, so they're just extending what's already there. The criteria that we use for reduction in right-of-way width is whether or not the utilities can be provided within that area, and the applicant has demonstrated that the utilities can be provided with that reduction in the right-of-way width. Next, there's reductions in lot dimensions and size. The minimum lot size requirement in the RS12 zone is 5,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 45 feet, and the minimum lot frontage is 40 feet. And the applicant is proposing several lots be around 4,000 square feet and the lot width reduced to 36 feet. The criteria that's used in evaluating that is whether or not there's off-street parking spaces that are restricted to private rear alleys. So most of the project area is accessed via private alleys here, here, and here, so all of these lots meet that requirement. The lots on the western edge all meet the minimum 5,000 square feet, so there is no reduction requested there. Lastly, open space. The code requires a minimum of 500 square feet of open space for single-family development that must be provided behind the building. The applicant instead is proposing Outlet D to be the communal open space. It's 1.65 acres, one acre more than would be required. And the criteria that we look at for that waiver is whether or not that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether it would enhance the project and not negatively impact the area or endanger public health. Lastly, I want to touch upon the goals that were adopted in 2017 that were a part of that original comprehensive plan amendment. The first was a housing goal related to relocating the tenants of the Forest View Mobile Home Park. The applicant has provided a relocation plan, and as I've already mentioned, we're recommending as a condition of the rezoning to execute an affordable housing agreement to really outline the specifics of that relocation. Next, there was a housing goal related to any development of multifamily adjacent to Mackinac Village. The development that is currently being proposed adjacent to Mackinac Village is now single-family. The applicant is still proposing to maintain a woodland buffer along that western property In terms of commercial goals, there was a goal related to the preservation of the scenic corridor along North Dubuque Street. As I've mentioned, there is the 40-foot wooded buffer that's being proposed, as well as recommended conditions related to design standards for those commercial lots related to signage and building materials. In addition, the applicant submitted these perspectives. This is the current view of North Dubuque Street facing north, and this is what the applicant has shown the development would look like along North Dubuque Street after development. This is facing south. And so this shows the southbound right turn lane and the 10-foot trail along North Dubuque Street. And this is looking west toward the new Foster Forest View Drive. The next goal was related to the buffer of existing trees and vegetation being preserved along North Dubuque Street, as well as woodlands being preserved between Knollwood Lane and any commercial development. So again, there is the 40-foot buffer, and as I've mentioned previously, Knollwood Lane is south of Outlet A. The applicant is proposing this as a conservation area and additional screening between Lot 1 and Outlet A and the residents to the south. Lastly, there was a goal related to transportation, that upon redevelopment of property west of Dubuque Street and south of Interstate 80, access to Dubuque Street for southbound traffic north of Foster Road may be allowed, provided that the access point intersection is designed to accommodate anticipated traffic volumes. The traffic study does show that the traffic volumes can be accommodated through the proposed transportation improvements. Staff has received several letters, which have been passed along to the city council, expressing opposition or concerns related to traffic, notification, and then sometimes for the proposed single-family area. There's also been concerns raised regarding the maintenance of the proposed single-family, also concerns on the impact on natural areas, as well as the commercial development, particularly potential impacts to the residents of Knollwood Lane. Staff has also received letters expressing support for the new housing for Forest View tenants and the secondary access being proposed for emergencies. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning at their most recent meeting. As the mayor mentioned, we have received the protest petitions. The commission accepted the conditions that were proposed by staff for the rezoning, as well as two additional conditions related to development on Lot 14, which I mentioned was for proposed senior housing. They recommended a condition that that development on that lot shall be for senior housing. They've also added a condition that the owner shall invest a minimum of $100,000 in private open space for the recreational areas proposed on Outlet D and Lot 49 for the single-family In terms of next steps, assuming the rezoning moves forward, there would be an affordable housing agreement that would need to be executed with the city upon approval by the city council. There is a condition related to the development of a signed master plan, which would need to be reviewed and approved by staff, and then the final plating, which would come back to council, as well as the final sensitive areas development plan that would be reviewed by staff. So with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Good job, Ann. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Ann?
I have a quick question on the sidewalk on North Dubuque Street. That's on the west side.
Yeah, it would be a trail on the west side, yes.
And so how far south is that going to go? Because there's that retaining wall.
It would go to Forest View Drive, and then you could head east across North Dubuque Street and head south.
Okay. So it won't go further south than Forest View Drive?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. Ann, I noticed in the notes on the P&amp;Z meetings that there were questions about the elevations of the buildings. And, you know, that what was stated was that they are, we don't know what those buildings will be, so providing elevations really aren't appropriate at this time. It would seem that that would also apply to the building footprints, correct? I mean, there are buildings shown in this rezoning, but it would seem to me that the actual footprint of the buildings are also uncertain at this time. Is that correct?
They're not uncertain because what they're showing on the plans is what is expected to be developed. So there's more certainty in the size of the buildings and the height and the number of units, but less certainty in the actual design of the building.
Uh-huh. So it's still not locked in. It's more certain but not locked in, in terms of their placement?
No, with the approval of the OPD rezoning, the council would be approving what's shown on those plans, and any substantial changes to what's being proposed would have to come back through the process and go to planning and zoning and to city council.
Okay, so the site plan is essentially locked in, then?
Unless the changes are minor enough that it wouldn't constitute a substantial change.
The other question I would have is on the woodland buffers. Couple of questions. How did you establish the width in the various locations? And also, what is the species composition with respect to the, whether they are evergreen or deciduous? I mean, for example, on Dubuque Street, we see those kind of views to the west of the existing vegetation. What is the composition of that vegetation? Because, I mean, it looked like the photo was taken in, when, in summer, let's say.
These?
Yeah. So that's a pretty strong visual buffer. However, if these trees are primarily deciduous, it's going to be a very open view that would be generated, it seems to me. I mean, I looked at it today, and it's, you know, most of the, what I could see, a considerable amount of vegetation is deciduous, and so this image is not reflective of what you would see when the vegetation is not in leaf, it would seem to me.
That's possible, but I guess we could see if we have any images of what that area looks like in the wintertime.
It would be interesting, yeah.
But the proposal is to keep the existing vegetation as it is for that 40-foot area.
So one question that leads me to ask or ponder would be, if we assume that the vegetation is primarily deciduous, would there be opportunities, which I'm seeing there, you know, there's some open lawn areas, for example, in the foreground, to supplement the buffer with evergreen vegetation to reinforce the buffer effect?
That might be a question that the consultants in PAC7G might be able to answer. I guess I would say, though, along that North Dubuque Street corridor, in addition to that 40-foot, it's not technically a woodland buffer, but that unimpacted area of woodlands, they're also proposing additional screening on the west side of that area.
On the backside?
Yeah.
So, yeah, on one side or the other, if, I'm just concerned that, I mean, this is such an important corridor, that if we find that that buffer needs to be reinforced, how can we do that? And that there are ways to further supplement the existing vegetation for the desired effect?
Ann, I have a related question that has to do with the existing woodlands. No, actually, it doesn't. It has to do with planting new trees and shrubs, sorry. So we've heard a great deal about deer, not tonight so much, but over the past many months. And I wonder about how thoroughly the developer and the staff has thought about the effects of the deer's need to eat vegetation on the survivability of any newly planted shrubs and trees. I know that there's sort of a management plan embedded in the proposal that you've presented to us, but I didn't see anything in it about deer. So I'm wondering about that. I'd hate to see a whole array of trees and shrubs planted out there and then consumed by the deer that we clearly are having difficulty with. They need to eat. They will. So I'm curious about that. You don't have to answer now, but, you know, I'm curious about that. Do we have other questions for Ann?
I guess I had a question about just the entry for off Dubuque into the new area. So on the side, do you know what that, is that just like stone-type entry?
That area there?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking at? Yeah. They're proposing a stone-type entrance, and the applicant can speak more to that.
Okay, all right. I think it, you know, really should be very decorative, or, you know, for that area, something that's really spiced up a little bit. So, I mean, I just noticed that right away, it kind of looked a lot of me, but I'm not trying to be critical, but I think we do want to do a good job of making that entryway really...
Attractive.
Very attractive, yes. The other, the only other question that I had is, you referred to staff suggesting condition for affordable housing. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So the proposed condition is that the applicant would need to execute an affordable housing agreement with the city, which would be approved by city council, that would lay out the specifics of the relocation of the Forest View tenants to the new housing.
Will there be, some of the modular, or mobile homes, will some of them be for rent, and some also be owner-occupied?
I think the applicant can address that best, but they are proposing a rent-to-own structure where the new tenant could rent for several years, and then they would have the option to buy.
All right. Great, thank you.
Other questions for Ann?
Ann, I had one more, and that is bicycle facilitating bicycling. Is that, there's a 10, in your presentation, you mentioned a 10-foot wide sidewalk along Forest View Drive.
Correct.
Is that where the bicycling is intended to take place?
Yeah, I think we refer to it as a wide sidewalk, but I think a lot of people do ride bicycles on those facilities.
Because we, there is no bike lanes.
That's correct.
I was looking at the Bike Master Plan, and this isn't, doesn't show up. I view this development as being kind of more at the scale of a bicycle experience in a way. So it does seem to me that accommodating bicycles is an important aspect of this. I mean, we're not providing any public, public open space. It's all private, correct?
Yes.
So, you know, one thing I've talked about on council is the idea that we need to provide accessible, easily accessible and convenient access to destination parkland. And I'm not even sure where that would be with respect to this development, but, you know, out in the peninsula, you have the dog park, and there may be other facilities there as well. But insofar as we don't have any within the development, I think that that's an important consideration. And again, just the scale of the development does not seem as pedestrian-friendly as one might see in other developments. So the idea of bicycle friendliness, I think, is important.
I think I want to ask you another question, Ann. It has to do with stormwater runoff. So there was, in the material we received, a pretty complicated plan, if you will, and analysis, having to do with stormwater runoff. And I can tell by the way you looked back in the back at the audience that you are not the expert on that. So let me ask a question, and then if you have to turn it around or somebody else to answer it, that'd be fine. Several weeks ago, I saw a presentation by the Army Corps of Engineers about trends in annual precipitation here and trends in peak precipitation events, both of them over 100-year period. They both showed significant increases with regard to annual precipitation. It was a straight-line increase, I mean, you know, best-fit line, you know, straight-line that way. With regard to peak precipitation events, it was more of a curve like that, an exponential growth kind of curve. They declined, the Corps declined to answer my question when I asked them about what they expect with regard to precipitation and especially peak precipitation events. So my question is this: When the staff analyzed the stormwater management plan, did they take into account increases in precipitation that are anticipated to come with the climate change that we are undergoing?
Someone from Public Works wanted to take that.
You got to come up.
Jason, you need to come up.
Jason Recker, engineer.
Hi, Jason.
Hey. No, for the current preliminary stormwater management plan, basically shows that a complete stormwater management system could be constructed to meet our current stormwater management requirements. As we move forward, if this gets approved into development, they'll be required to submit final stormwater management calculations and details for individual sites and phases in the development.
Okay, I ask especially with regard to the ravines that lead, the south ravines are one of the ones that lead down toward Idlewild. So I want to make absolutely certain we don't get ourselves in a position where, under extreme precipitation events, we cause flooding down in Idlewild. That's been a concern for the past three years, and I think we need to make sure that we're really looking ahead instead of looking backwards.
And I think it's also important to remember the Idlewild Drainage Diversion Project that's currently ongoing, is in final design right now, is designed to handle large flows from that northern watershed. So that should help considerably with local flooding from heavy rainstorms north of Idlewild.
Okay, that's good, and I knew that was the case, and I'm glad you answered it that way. I think, I believe we should double-check that to see what kind of precipitation events we're contemplating will occur.
Okay, all right.
Okay, other questions for Ann?
Thank you.
Ann, there might be other questions in a bit, so hang around, please. I think you would anyhow. Any member of the public should feel free to come up now and address this topic. Say whatever's on your mind. Please do not take more than three minutes. Hello, Brian.
Despite, Brian DeCosta again. Despite my opposition to the modular homes across the street from my place, I do think this whole project overall will be a very cool project, be great for Iowa City. That being said, Algonquin's a pretty dark street. I've often been surprised at how little lighting there is on Algonquin, and I think when the new development goes in, you're going to need to take a look at the lighting on the street and increase that. Referring, Bruce, you were mentioning the Forest View sign entering in off of Dubuque Street. Just the property, two properties just south of that, the private property of the Freedmans, when the city came in and redid that, they put a limestone face on it. I think they poured it in concrete and put a, put a false face on it. If you drive down there, you'll see that, and it looks awesome. And if it matched that, it would be great, and it would fit in. Mr. Thomas, you were speaking of the buffers, and I'm concerned about that, both from the Knollwood Lane and for the Mission Point Road. I don't know what kind of trees are going to be in there, but hopefully there'll be some non-deciduous, and there'll be tall trees. And the buffer's always been a concern to me for the Knollwood Lane and the gas station that's going in right near there. It seems like everybody's working real hard to preserve the neighborhood as much as we can, but as long as we have some nice trees there. And they do need to be deer-proof, because, yes, we get a lot of, the deers just chew stuff up in our neighborhood. And the stormwater runoff, just a little bit east of where you're talking about from Idlewild, I own the property 6 Knollwood Lane, which has the ditch in it right against Foster Road. And we get all the water runoff from Forest View right now. Everything that runs down Lower Drive comes down that ditch and comes through our ditch and goes underneath our lane, and then hits the intersection where it goes and runs parallel with Dubuque Street. That's the way the stormwater runs. And our drain going under our drive gets clogged up occasionally. And I've called the city on it in the past and got some pushback that it's a private drain, private storm drain going under there. Well, it's not all our water. It's water from everybody else. And they did eventually come and clean it out. But it gets silted in, I believe it's somewhat silted in now quite a bit, and needs to be cleaned out by the city. You can drive down the, look at, just get out of your car right at Knollwood Lane there and look in the ditch, you'll see a stream. I was there tonight, working on my yard, and there's a stream of water running through the ditch. So all the water makes its way through there to the intersection. So that needs to be cleaned out, and it needs to be cleaned out regularly because it silt's in quite a bit. That's all I got. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
My name is Jimmy Becker. I'm a part of the Blackbird Investments, the development team, a representative of the ownership and co-applicant Forest View Tenant Association on the project. And as I was looking at this illustration that's shown here on the screen, I couldn't help but think of my one-year-old son, who is just learning shapes and colors. And he just learned how to put the square peg in the square hole. And there's a lot of constraining factors that's led to the complexity of this project that has been very thoughtfully thought-through from the involvement of a very extensive team and a lot of collaboration with city staffs. We're very thankful for all of the collaborative effort from city staff and as well the collaboration from the residents of Forest View Tenant Association, Center for Worker Justice, and all others who have been involved over the last three years. Just to highlight, I know there's been a lot of information and a lot of visuals that have been shown tonight. I want to highlight four primary objectives that we're looking to achieve within this development, and we have our consulting team available too to answer any more technical or specific questions. So our first and most important objective is the relocation of the residents of Forest View. And so that's represented in total, there are 76 families that live in Forest View today. And as this illustration shows with what we proposed, there are 57 homes. In addition to that, as it's been mentioned earlier tonight, we will be executing an affordable housing agreement, which we're working on with the city, city attorney. And that will effectively memorialize what we've worked with Center for Worker Justice and the city, as well as Center, excuse me, as well as the residents of Forest View over the last three years. It's the relocation plan, which I believe that you guys have seen before. So the affordable housing agreement is effectively memorializing the relocation plan. In addition to relocation as the first objective, our second objective is to provide a secondary access point for the residents to the west and south of our development, especially in the case of flood or other emergency events. And so that's been discussed and illustrated. And if there's any questions specific to traffic, I saw that Ken is here, and we also have fourth engineering who conducted the traffic study to answer any specific questions that you have related to traffic. Our third objective is preservation, and I think Ann did a very good job of explaining that. And hopefully this visual can also help represent that. The greenery is what currently exists today. There are also, as Ann mentioned, 828 planted trees that are shown within the development. And we have Impact 7G, our environmental consultant, and HBK Engineering, who's our civil engineer on the project. If there's any specific questions, I know a couple of questions already have been asked, and so we're happy to address those questions this evening. The fourth objective is compliance, and going back to that illustration of trying to fit a square object into a square peg, or however that works, square hole, thank you. That has, has taken a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of brainstorming and creativity to develop what we have, is shown here today and represented. And so if there's any questions that you have now, I open it to all of you. I'm happy to address those questions, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Jimmy?
I had a question on the profile of Forest View Road, which is, I understand, and I don't, I don't think Ann spoke to that specifically in terms of its design. And I was reading the planning and zoning notes on it. And as I recall, the, the road would be 28 feet wide.
Correct.
Allowing parking on both sides of the street.
That's correct, yep.
And that concept intrigues me. I know, you know, that many major thoroughfares in Iowa City do not allow parking along the street, and I do view parking as a potential calming feature. But I guess one of the questions I would have, do, do we really expect many people to use Forest View Drive for parking? Because if not, we then end up with a 25-foot-wide roadway with, effectively 14-foot lanes, which are quite wide in terms of the need for lane width. So that, that concerns me, that, you know, I've seen in certain residential neighborhoods where we have 25-foot-wide roads, which also, also are designed to accommodate parking on both sides, not many people park on the, along the roadway because they, they have sufficient space on their own property to, to park off-street. And so that, that, that concerns me. How, how will this play out? And in a way similar with my concerns about the woodland buffer, if we find there isn't much parking occurring along the roadway, how do we address the potential impacts of having effectively 14-foot lanes, which would encourage higher speeds?
And so is, just to make sure I'm understanding the question correctly, is there contemplation of the road width, reducing the road width? Is that?
I hadn't heard that. I mean, the idea was if we find that speeds are higher, that we might consider a center median as a way of addressing that concern, which would in effect narrow the lane widths by, by inserting the center median.
I think if, Ken, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm going to.
You're walking better.
Thank you for noticing. Kent Ralston, transportation planner. So, yeah, I mean, the, that's a valid question, you know, how much parking will be along the new Forest View Drive area? You know, I don't know that I can answer that question. I don't know that anybody can until the actual land uses are determined or defined. I would say there is some on-street parking now on the existing portion of Algonquin, that's actually fairly well-parked. There may be some desire to park on Algonquin in the new manufactured housing area, although I don't know how much we'll be able to park on-street because of the driveway location. So that's sort of yet to be determined, I think, in my mind at least. The one thing I did mention at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was that there's also the roundabout traffic circle, as you can see, between Algonquin and Forest View Drive, which I think would help that to some degree. That's primarily, in my eyes, kind of the urban residential area along Algonquin. Once you get a little bit further to the east on what was the proposed Forest View Drive, it seems to be a little bit more commercial. The buildings are a little, are set back a little bit further. And I think what will be there in terms, unless I'm incorrect, what will be there in terms of residential housing is mixed-use, I think, with some commercial on the first floor, potentially residential on the upper floors.
So John's asking a reasonable question here about whether the road should be designed as if cars are, or trucks are going to park on both sides of the street.
Right.
When we have no evidence to believe that will be the case.
Right, I agree. I would say the same for any new street in town. I mean, it's hard for us to know.
Because if they do, it's actually going to be kind of, you know, 28 feet, so if, say, cars do park on both sides, that's roughly seven feet on either side. So you're talking about 14 feet left, which is really not adequate for, I mean--
It would be what we, what we call a giveaway situation.
On a street that, you know, at full build-out is you're anticipating 15,000 vehicles, right?
Per day.
Per day.
Not during like a peak hour, but per day.
Per day. But I mean, that's a fairly significant amount of traffic. So I'm just trying to--
Right, so it's a little bit of a juxtaposition where there is a lot of traffic anticipated, and we don't know how much parking there'll be, but if we narrow the street, we've still got the same anticipated traffic volume. So it's a little bit of a juxtaposition there. I don't know if I know what the right answer is, but I, with what I had told the Planning and Zoning Commission was, in my, in my feeling, the area from the traffic circle to the east is really not as much of a residential feel, it's more of an urban type of environment.
I guess, I mean, in looking at the plan, with the exception of the area around the Forest View neighborhood on the west side, there's really just the one road. So it's, in terms of the experience of this development, that road, in my view, is extremely important in terms of conveying what the experience is.
Sure.
So that has to be a really compelling, beautiful streetscape effect.
Sure.
I'm, I'm interested in the idea of the center median in that regard. If that's maybe one way, if we're not anticipating a lot of street traffic, you know, having a landscape center median, I think would strongly--
Sure.
--improve the feel of that street.
Sure. I mean, it would certainly help calm traffic as well.
And calm traffic.
Right. I think the one thing to note, too, that Ann had mentioned is the 10-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side of Forest View, which I think will also work well to accommodate bicycles as well as pedestrians.
Right, right.
Will be a nice street-escaping element.
Thank you, Kevin.
Don't go too far away, Kent.
So just with respect to the question raised, with widening the roads, that has other impacts with respect to setbacks of buildings and preservation of trees. I think Kevin here can go in to expand on that point.
Well, just to be clear, nobody's advocating widening the roads.
Yeah, I didn't suggest that.
That's not what's being suggested.
No, and that's not our ideal situation is, at all. Yes, there will be--
Kevin, please, please stay in.
Kevin Munson, with Newman Munson Architects, excuse me. We don't have intentionally visitor parking or delivery parking or any other parking in most locations on this development, which does force visitors and delivery trucks and others to use the street as their parking means. So we do expect there will be quite a bit of parking on Forest View Drive and the extension of Algonquin, just as the current Algonquin has quite a bit of parking on it. Because most of our homes, especially in the single-family home areas, have alley access and alley parking, that really doesn't provide for guests, and so they will be using the streets for, for that kind of parking, which we are really encouraging it because we want the calming effect of parking on our streets, so. And the trail, by the way, is on the south side of Forest View, the wider sidewalk, because that's where all of our residential is on the south side of Forest View, not the north. So we intentionally put our wider trail, biking trail and walking trail on the south side to encourage a safer pedestrian and bike atmosphere.
Kevin, before you sit down, maybe I can ask a follow-up question, which really doesn't have anything to do with Forest View Drive. It has to do with Algonquin.
Uh-huh.
So I'm aware that many residents of Algonquin have expressed concerns about the increased traffic on Algonquin, and therefore, safety concerns for their children and so on.
Sure.
And I know it's outside the project boundaries, so the city's staff is involved in this question as well.
Sure.
But I'm wondering whether the development team and the staff have thought about steps that could be taken to ensure that the increased traffic that takes place on Algonquin will not pose a safety hazard, especially during winter conditions. I mean, we've seen this photograph or a couple photographs of what it's like, you know, what it was like last, last January or February, it was pretty, pretty nasty apparently. So I'm wondering if you or, where Kent could get involved again, whether you've considered steps that could be taken there.
Well, we, we've talked a lot about where our traffic generators are and how to ensure that the bulk of our traffic goes to North Dubuque Street, and really has led us to this plan. As you can see, our single-family area is primarily on the far west. All of our heavier users are much closer to Forest View, and we anticipate the huge majority of our traffic is going directly to, to North Dubuque Street. It would be the shortest and fastest. We want to, we don't want it to be too fast. That's why we've got parking and roundabouts and the like. But that's very intentional, where we've placed our housing counts and our, our units is to really foster traffic going to the east and not going to the south. And our traffic studies have proven that out, and we've got those very well documented.
There's a quick illustration I'll show you, too, to that. Must have passed it. Sorry about that. This is why wives don't give husbands the control?
Hmm.
Okay, sorry about that. So here, here's an illustration of what was previously proposed in the existing North Dubuque Street plan and what is now being proposed. And it illustrates just the anticipation of trip generation, as Kevin had mentioned, along North Dubuque Street. So 86% of the trips being generated are going to be coming from the commercial users, 11% of the trips from the multifamily residential, and 3% of the trips will be generated from the Forest View area.
Did you have more you wanted to say, Jimmy?
I just opened, opened any questions.
Okay, are there any other questions for Jimmy? Thanks, we might ask you to come back up.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address this topic? Hi there.
Hello. My name is Debbie Hyken, and I live at 4 Knollwood Lane. And I, my house is the northernmost house that borders Outlaw A. So basically, when I walked it off and measured and all this good stuff, my bedroom window will be approximately 100 feet from the gas station, which I think we all would agree is not optimal. Actually, it's horrible. Anyway, I would like you to take that into consideration. I have no problem with any of the residential part, it's just the commercialization part that I feel is just going to have a huge negative impact on our neighborhood. Excuse me. Not only for our Knollwood Lane neighborhood, but even for the people in the modular neighborhood. I mean, we're bringing commercial entities into our neighborhood. We're going to be bringing people off the interstate, random people, to the gas station, to the drive-throughs. So we're introducing who knows who into our neighborhood. So it's these type of concerns that I'm, I'm really concerned with. I'm also concerned about my property value, because I checked thinking, maybe I'm just paranoid. But no, unfortunately, property values drop if you are close to a gas station. I hope to live there for the rest of my life. I'm now retired, and I was really looking forward to enjoying my home, my property, being outside. Now I don't know what's going to happen. So that, those are some of my concerns. And I even wonder, worry about the kids, you know, in the modular homes, all the studies that show living close proximity to fast food and convenience stores and what it does to children's health. So even that's a concern. I mean, I think there's a whole lot of things we haven't thought through totally. So, you know, please consider some of those things as well. And I guess that's it for me.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Quenby Murphy, and I'm a resident of White Oak Place, right between the peninsula and Mackinac Village. And I apologize in advance for my comments, I kind of was scribbling them as I came because I wasn't prepared to speak, but I decided I needed to. And I wanted to make one comment about the buffer zone and some of the displacement of the deer, and that is just to remind everybody that there is no such thing as deer-proof trees and shrubs in our neighborhood. So as much as we talk about that that might be a solution, we already are really struggling with that. I have everything in my yard deer-proof, and it doesn't matter. I'm also hearing a lot about collaboration and working together on this project in the last three years, but I think that a component that's missing might be other stakeholders who have lived in the neighborhood besides the Forest View residents. Obviously, it directly impacts them, but I feel like if this was truly going to be a revolutionary and inclusive approach to affordable housing and development, then maybe you would have had more universal buy-in by including other residents in this neighborhood and in the close-by neighborhoods at an earlier stage. So I was born and raised in Iowa City. I moved away for a short time after college and returned. I moved away for a short time after college and returned, in part because the character, the aesthetic and the feel of the town have always been things that were important to me in the place that I decided to call home. I moved on to White Oak Place five years ago with my husband and my daughter. We built our home on the last available lot there. We've loved the location of the neighborhood and loved the feel of being tucked away in a quiet, removed-feeling setting, and especially being surrounded by the natural environment, which is one of my primary concerns with the proposal as it stands. I'm very concerned about several aspects of the development in its current proposal. One is the massive increase in density that will change the look, the sound, the feel of the entire area. I'm also very concerned about the increase in traffic, as many people have mentioned already. Within the next two years, my daughter will be of a typical age to walk and ride her bike independently in between and around the neighborhoods off of Foster Road. And we already have lots of concerns with how the recent development in the peninsula of all the multi-unit housings have really increased the traffic and the parking. There was a gentleman earlier from Forest View who talked about how that's already changed in the peninsula, and so my concern is that this is going to change it even more in that area. If you've never experienced that, bring a seven-year-old to take a walk on those streets, and you will see how often you have to stop and creep carefully out to make sure that you are avoiding an oncoming car because of the traffic and the way the parking is structured. I'm concerned about the added noise and light pollution that will come with the development as it's currently proposed. Those were huge factors to us when we chose to build where we did. I remember standing on our lot before we built and just listening to the sound coming from the interstate in the neighborhood, because that was such an important factor in why we chose that spot. As a resident of Iowa City who has always treasured this special place, I think it is truly a shame to think of losing the beauty of our Dubuque Street entrance. I'm sorry, but the rendering doesn't provide me with a lot of comfort right now. I think we've all seen renderings that look really nice on paper, and as you mentioned, when you actually see it in practice, it doesn't play out that way. So many towns have busy, characterless, commercialized areas as their gateway. We've always been blessed to have a lovely green space, and I'm just concerned that this is something that we will lose. There's a reason we chose to live in Iowa City near this entrance and not in Corville and North Liberty. Someone mentioned earlier, the tree canopy, that's an asset to our city at the beginning of the meeting tonight, and the 40-foot buffer just doesn't seem to me like it's going to cover that. I'm concerned that this has been painted as an issue about whether we, as a community, are either for or against improving the current housing situation of the residents in Forest View, and that seems grossly unfair to me. I am concerned that the development company who supposedly has our community's interests in mind isn't even local and therefore has no long-term stake in the plan. I'm not against all development in general in our area, and I'm certainly in favor of looking at solutions to improve the immediate and long-term living solution for the residents of Forest View. A woman earlier said, I want to preserve, from Forest View spoke and said, "I want to preserve the neighborhood with better-quality houses," and I think everyone in this room would be in favor of doing that. But the way the current proposal stands with the density, the traffic, the commercial development, it's not one that my family supports, and we ask you not to let it pass. I want to also just touch on, Ms. Taylor, I think it might have been you that said, "I wouldn't mind having the Forest View residents in my backyard," and I want to make it very clear that I would not mind having the residents in my backyard either. I do mind having commercial development in this part of town, the lack of natural environment and more noise and traffic in my front yard, when I specifically chose my neighborhood with those factors in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Quenby. Anyone else? Hi there.
Good evening. My name's Alfredo Ortiz. I have been a Forest View resident for my whole life, and my parents have been living in Forest View for almost 20 years. Forest View is a pretty peaceful and tranquil place. We are all one big family. We have all known each other for a significant amount of time, but our homes are in a very bad shape. It's been three years, three long years, of patiently waiting since the start of this project. We believe it's time for action. My dad works two jobs to make money for our house, and I barely get to see him. I think it's a great opportunity to live in a dignified home that we deserve, and I think it's pretty sad that my sister sleeps in the living room just to have space to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Claudio Narciso, and I've been a resident of Forest View for almost 10 years, and I am ready for a positive change. I have met any friends and family here, and Forest View is a very secure place with many kids around, who hang with their friends and treat each other with kindness. The only thing we ask is for a change of new homes so I can have a proper room to sleep in and not the couch. Once you get to know the people living in Forest View, you start to think that that's a place where families can grow in and with peace. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name's Donna Davis. My husband and I have lived at Forest View Trailer Court since 1985. So, when we learned that the court was going to change ownership, we were really concerned. We didn't know what was going to happen to us and our neighborhood. And over the years, it's changed so much, but for the last, oh, well, since the Coles owned it, it has become so family-oriented that we really stopped looking for someplace else to live. And now, we thought we would probably live there until we were ready for assisted living, which is probably coming up sooner rather than later. But in the meantime, we like living in a family. We like the diversity of our neighborhood. We like the fact that people care about each other. We like the proximity to everything in Iowa City, to arts, to entertainment, to jobs, to a good hospital. All these things are reasons that we are staying, that we want to stay in this neighborhood. And I know that our neighbors also feel the same way. So, for three years now, we've been waiting and trying to work on this. And as someone previously said, we've, yes, admittedly, we've let our homes kind of slide because that money could be better spent, and we thought it was kind of foolish to be putting $100,000 or whatever into our already falling-down trailers if we weren't going to be living in them for very much longer. So, we'd really like to see this plan pass and get on with the next step of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Hi, Eddie.
Hello, City Council. My name's Ed Cole, the owner and developer of the project. In recent events, in North Liberty, a mobile home park just was bought, and they doubled the lot rents. So, we truly need affordable housing, and all that did to any guy who was trying to think about buying another mobile home park somewhere, just it drove the price up to like $60,000 a pad. The owners in Iowa City of the other parks, like myself, are, they have pride in their, they have family-oriented parks. We want to keep that tradition going, and it's the reason with families like this we have here that we do it. You know, it's the growth, we get to watch the kids grow up, and it's just an awesome feeling to have these residents as part of our family, and I just ask for your support.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Perez. I have been living in Forest View by five years. I enjoy just, I really enjoy living there. I'm coming from LA. In LA, you know, it's like Chicago. You can't trust anybody. This is a beautiful place for living. You can leave the keys in your car. Nobody's going to touch it. When I just came, I can't believe it, because in LA, you can put your car inside the garage and put three padlocks and everything you want, and they're going to open it anyway. In this place, you can trust your neighbors. They're really kind people. Everybody's nice. You enjoy living there. Really, it's a good opportunity to be here, talking with you, living there, and writing the story, like I said a lot of the time, writing the story with this project, because it's a big project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alberto. Hi there.
Buenas noches. Me llamo Zulay Flores.
Good evening. My name is Zulay Flores.
Soy residente de Forest View por cinco años. Mi esposo tiene ocho.
I've been a resident of Forest View for five years, and my husband has been there for eight years.
Y bueno, realmente creo que desde que se inició este tremendo movimiento, he estado constantemente y creo que el señor Jim es prueba de ellos, que creo que tenía mucho tiempo que no lo veía. Y bueno...
I really believe that since this tremendous movement began, and I know that Jim has been watching this and part of this since the beginning, so you can attest to this.
Entonces considero que la ciudad ha aportado muchísimo, ha considerado nuestras opiniones, ha considerado las opiniones de los desarrolladores. Se han oído todas las partes, y todas las partes creo que tenemos pro y contras indiscutiblemente. Pero creo que es una buena oportunidad para todos en la ciudad, para toda esta comunidad, que se va a beneficiar de viviendas de bajo recursos pero con óptima calidad de vida. De verdad que sí.
So, I consider that the city has really taken time to hear everyone's opinions, to consider our opinions, to consider the developers' opinions, to consider neighbors' opinions. Everything has pros and cons, but I think this is a really good opportunity to improve the city, to improve affordable housing and the quality of life.
Sí, es verdad que se van a desarrollar partes comerciales y se van a desarrollar también otras viviendas, que son de verdad de mucho, de mucha necesidad en todas las ciudades y en todo el mundo, porque bien lo dicen los derechos, derecho a la vida, derecho a la vivienda y derecho a la educación.
Okay. It's true that there's going to be some commercial development and also housing, which is really critically important all over the country. It means the right to
Derecho a la vida.
The right to live, the right to housing, and the right to education.
Y bueno, creo que es cuestión de darnos una oportunidad por todas las partes, pero el desarrollo o el proyecto me parece que es de una calidad, este, de repercusiones y dejando precedente en todo momento y por todas las partes.
It's a question of giving everyone opportunity, and I think that this development project creates a really important precedent that can benefit in many areas.
Buenas noches y gracias por escuchar.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for listening.
Oh, again.
Again.
Hello, my name is Norma. Tengo más de 20 años viviendo in Forest View.
I have more than, I've been living at Forest View for more than 20 years.
Tengo tres hijos.
I have three children.
Que nacieron ahí.
Who were born there.
Para mí, la familia Cole es una bendición, porque ellos han ayudado mucho a que mis niños hayan crecido saludables.
For me, the Cole family is a blessing. They've helped my children grow up healthy.
Espiritual y mentalmente, porque ellos hacen convivios y les enseñan muchas cosas, los mantienen en actividad y son muy buenos alumnos.
So, they, both spiritually and mentally, because they hold some gatherings where children, convivios donde los niños aprenden. So, gatherings so that children can learn.
Por eso, a mí me gusta mucho vivir ahí y no quisiera salirme de ese lugar.
So, for those reasons, I really like to live here, and I don't want to have to leave from this area.
Porque mis hijos quieren mantenerse con sus amigos de toda la vida.
My children want to continue to maintain these friendships for their whole life.
Yo con mis vecinos también.
And I feel the same way about my neighbors.
Y hasta ellos están planificando que en este proyecto van a tener un empleo, tanto en el hotel o en algo.
Uh-huh. And we're even working on plans that people could have jobs, could have access to jobs through this project, whether it's through the hotels or in other commercial areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Wilfred Nixon. I'll do my label thingy. And I live on Tranquil Bluff Trail, which is just off Mackinac Road, and I've been struck this evening by a number of ironies. I think the first irony was, one of the early items in the agenda was a proclamation for Arbor Day, and now the first rezoning talks about destroying 50-plus percent of the trees in this area. So, do we say it, or do we do it? There's a certain irony there. There's a second concern. We've heard a lot, and appropriately, about the need for decent housing for these people who currently live in Forest View. And as others have said, I think that is absolutely critical. We need to have that. But nobody's asked why their housing has got to such a dilapidated state as it has. And I use that word "dilapidated" carefully, because it was used by many of the residents. And we could ask, where was the Center for Justice four years ago, when people were living in what must have been nearly equally dilapidated housing? Did it not matter then? Was it not a concern then? Was it just affordable housing, and that's okay, because we don't care how good it is? Yes, it's important they be rehoused. It is clearly critical that their community be maintained, although I noticed they'll be losing some members of that community, going down from, I believe, 74 families to only 57 in the new development. That's a shame. The concerns about traffic are substantial. That little bit of Forest View Drive coming off Dubuque is not terribly long, somewhere between 100 and 200 feet. It will be dealing with 1,000 vehicles an hour. That's what the traffic study said. That's an awful lot of traffic. And by the way, a lot of that coming off Dubuque Street, which will be fine, no worries with Dubuque Street, coming off Dubuque Street, it's going to be turning into the gas station, turning left into the gas station, causing backups into Dubuque Street. That's a problem. There's a concern about parking on both sides of the street, and I share that concern, but mine perhaps comes from a slightly different point of view. I'm also worried about that roundabout. Why? It's only the 3rd of April, and as the mayor said, it wasn't that long ago we were plowing the streets. Plow drivers, with whom I work, don't like roundabouts. I grew up in England, so I love roundabouts. They're great for traffic, but they are terrible to plow. I would say, for that reason, don't put a center median in. It's only going to make it worse. There must be another way of doing it. So, the traffic is a huge issue, 1,000 vehicles an hour. That's 14 a minute. That's an awful lot of traffic in a very restricted area. There is a concern with manufactured housing, and this is general, not specific to this, that it doesn't have the longevity of more typical homes. It gets run down, and indeed, again, the word "dilapidated" was used. Those of us who live around the area have, I think, a very reasonable concern that this that this may become dilapidated. What will be done to ensure that it doesn't? What help will be given? That's a real concern. And then there's what, for me, is a final and a concern I didn't plan on bringing tonight, but it arose. We've been talking about inclusivity and the importance of maintaining the community, and those are very critical things. And indeed, I've heard that both the mayor and councillor Taylor have been involved in the inclusion efforts in the Forest View Association. But you stopped your inclusion. You stayed within one area. You didn't go beyond that to talk to some of the other people who are here tonight and who've come to express our concerns, and heard you say, councillor Taylor, "Well, it's just not in my backyard." I'm afraid that's a pejorative term. And when you use that about those of us who, like everybody else here, are trying to build up our community, it doesn't do much for us, does it? We are not included, we are excluded. Now, that's okay with me. Iowa City is a UNESCO city of literature, and one of my favorite bits of literature is Don Quixote. And of course, he loved to tilt at windmills. But I'd encourage you as councillors not to become the windmills. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilfred.
Hi, Margarita.
Hi, buenas noches a todos.
Hi, good evening to everyone.
Bueno, la segunda vez que estoy aquí con ustedes.
It's the second time I'm up here with you.
Bueno, como ustedes le dije, tengo a mi hija de siete años.
Pardon me. Margarita, please state your name again, please.
Quiere que diga su nombre otra vez. Margarita Baltasar.
Margarita Baltasar. Cool. I guess I don't have to translate, sorry.
Como le dije, tengo a mi niña aquí, y yo podía estar dormida y mi hija descansando, pero esto es un sueño por el que tenemos que luchar, y hay sacrificios.
So, as I said, I have my daughter here with me tonight. I could have her home sleeping, but it's a dream that we're willing to make sacrifices for.
Y hemos trabajado por tres años, y no vamos a parar, porque nuestro sueño lo queremos lograr.
And we've worked on this for three years, but we're not going to stop, because we want to achieve our dream.
Y este proyecto, yo creo que sería como una historia, un precedente para que otras comunidades, si quieren ser escuchados, pueden levantar la voz, venir, exponer y trabajar juntos, sin afectar a nadie, sin destruir comunidades, al contrario, unir comunidades.
So, I also think this is an historical precedent, so that other residents from communities can come together, demand to be heard, and instead of dividing communities, can unite communities.
Y es muy importante educar a las personas que tenemos que luchar para ir avanzando hacia adelante y no tener más crisis de vivienda, porque es muy necesario que Iowa y que se pasen más leyes que cuiden a los residentes, a los reenteros, y que no se desalojen nada más, porque nosotros tampoco estábamos incluidos en el plan. Pero hemos luchado y hemos trabajado junto con los desarrolladores. No ha sido fácil, pero lo hemos hecho con ganas, con humildad, con corazón, y estamos hasta este punto para lograr nuestro sueño.
It's really important to educate people to fight, to stop the housing crisis. We need rights for residents so that there won't continue to be dislocation, that people won't continue to be dislocated from their housing. And we were not included at the beginning of all this, but we joined together and we fought to be included, and we began to work closely with the developers with heart and humility to achieve a plan.
Y yo creo que con este proyecto podemos seguir luchando para lograr casas de bajos recursos para más personas, no solo para Forest View, para más personas, porque yo, al menos, no quiero y que mi hija no quiero que vea las calles llenas de personas viviendo, perdón, en las calles, y no quiero eso, y tenemos que luchar todos juntos, la ciudad, la comunidad, vecinos, todos tenemos que trabajar. Yo sé que en proyectos buenos hay dificultades para tomar decisiones, a veces, y yo respeto mucho...
Sorry. Espera un momentito para que no pierdo nada. I'm sorry, just so I don't lose anything. I think that with this project, we can keep fighting, we can continue this momentum and keep fighting for housing for more people. I don't want, and I don't want my daughter to see people living in the streets because of the lack of affordable housing.
No quieres ver las personas en las calles sin... Sin vivienda. Necesitamos educar, y con este proyecto podemos ir educando a nuestros hijos que tienen que tener corazón, luchar por las personas que necesitan una casa de bajos recursos. Sabemos que es difícil lograr una cosa de la noche a la mañana, pero lo podemos lograr todos juntos, y a veces, y respeto mucho la opinión de los demás que no están a favor en una cosa u otra, lo respetamos. Pero también nosotros necesitamos luchar por nuestro sueño, por nuestros niños de Forest View, por nuestras personas ya de edad, que han vivido 30 años, 29 años en ese lugar, y que están soñando con una casa nueva. Sería un gran sueño para ellos, para los niños y para las personas mayores.
We need to educate our kids to have the heart to fight for housing for low-income people. I really respect the opinions of people who've spoken against us, but I, and I think...
Respeto las opiniones de los que han hablado en contra, y no leo mis... Pero necesitamos... Luchar por casas de bajos recursos para niños, para personas adultas.
But I think that it's really important that we fight for low-income housing for the sake of children, for the sake of seniors who've lived here for 30 years and have a dream of having a new house, a new house that they can live in.
Yo creo que tenemos mucho, mucho que trabajar. Forest View, si se logra este gran sueño, sería algo maravilloso, pero aún así seguiremos en la lucha. No porque Forest View se logre reubicarse con nuevas casas, terminamos, no. Tenemos que seguir trabajando hacia adelante para dar más mejor vida para otras personas, no solo trabajar en nuestro interés personal, sino trabajar para nuestros hermanos.
We have a lot to work on to continue to win this dream of affordable housing for everyone. We can't stop just with our own housing, but we want to keep fighting for everyone so our brothers and sisters can all achieve this dream. Gracias. Thank you.
Good evening.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Victoria Millán.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Millán.
Yo tengo 19 años viviendo en la...
I've been living in the Forest View neighborhood for 19 years.
Y tengo mis tres niños, tengo tres niñas y un niño. Tengo dos cuartos ahí donde estoy, y por favor, se nos puede apoyar con esto, porque uno ya se está poniendo feliz ahí, ya está comprobando que sí le van a comprobar las casas que van a dar, porque mis niñas ya no están a gusto con dos cuartos que tiene, y mi niño está durmiendo en la sala, uno no se siente feliz de dormir uno en el cuarto, el niño en la sala, y que como está chiquito, uno le da miedo si sale para afuera. Tiene que estar levantando.
I have three girls and one boy, and we have two bedrooms. And so, we're really excited and happy to see the plans coming forward of building the housing that we can achieve. My daughter has to sleep in the living room, and you know, you worry with younger kids about kids getting out of the door, and so I think that would be...
Y ahí es bonito, con los vecinos que pasaron ahorita. Ahí ellos nos ayudan con los niños cuando nosotros entramos, trabajan bien temprano, y ellos nos vigilan a nuestros niños cuando van a la escuela.
It's really beautiful, as others have said, the way that the community works together, so that if someone has to leave early for work, their other trusted neighbors in the community who can take care of the kids and help them get off to school.
Y son bien amables los dueños, y nadie se quiere mover ahí. Lo que ya tardamos ahí, buen tiempo llevamos, nadie quiere salir de ahí.
The owners are really nice, and nobody wants to leave there. That's why we've lived there for so many years. People don't want to leave.
Que nos apoyen, por favor, más que nada.
So, please support us more than anything.
Y gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
¿En inglés? Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Cristina Reynoso.
Hello, good evening. My name is Cristina Reynoso.
He vivido en Forest View por casi 15 años.
I've lived in Forest View for almost 15 years.
Soy mamá de dos niñas especiales.
I'm a mother of two special needs children.
Ellas tienen autismo.
They have autism.
Y yo, ya son tres años que estamos apoyando, empujando este proyecto.
It's been three years since we've been supporting and pushing forward this project.
Ya que recibimos mucho apoyo mutuamente en la comunidad.
We've received a lot of mutual support from the community.
Con mis hijas con autismo, para mí es difícil moverme a otros lugares, porque son niñas que tienen rutinas, no aceptan a veces los cambios tan fácilmente.
Since my kids have autism, it's particularly hard to move to other areas, because my kids, it's important that they maintain a routine, and so they can't just adjust and adapt to new areas easily.
Ellas empezaron a hablar tarde, ya grandes.
They began to speak later in life than other kids.
De hecho, mi hija la mayor tiene 12 años y empezó a hablar en el 2014.
Tiene 12 años?
Mm-hmm.
My oldest is 12 years old, and she began to speak in 2014.
Entonces, para mí es importante que la comunidad siga, porque mis hijas se sienten seguras en la comunidad.
So, for me, it's really important that this community stay together, because my children feel safe in this community.
Como madre, me preocupa el que de repente se salgan, pues los carros y todo, pero la comunidad las identifica.
As a mother, of course, I worry that the kids will go out, go out into the road with cars, but the community watches out for each other.
Y ese es un gran apoyo para mí como madre, porque al identificarlas sé que no corren mayor peligro y sé que inmediatamente pueden auxiliar. Gracias a Dios nunca ha pasado nada.
That's a big support for me as a mother, knowing that people will identify my kids and help them out. So, it's a huge support for me.
Y en los 15 años que tengo ya viviendo en Forest View, realmente nunca he tenido ningún problema con ninguno de mis vecinos.
In my 15 years of living in Forest View, I can really say that I've never had any problem with my neighbors.
Y siempre ha habido muy buena comunicación con los dueños.
There's always been good communication with the owners.
Y hemos recibido siempre el apoyo cuando lo hemos necesitado de ellos.
And we've received the support we need from them.
De hecho, el año que pasó, con la tormenta que hubo, cayó un árbol sobre mi trailer.
Uh-huh. In fact, the big storm that...
Un árbol?
A branch fell down to my trailer during the big storm.
Gracias a la siguiente trailer, mi trailer no se partió por completo.
Oh, thanks to the trailer next door, my trailer didn't just come apart completely.
Afortunadamente, mi cuñado me la pudo reparar.
Luckily, my brother-in-law could help me repair it.
Pero la verdad, creo que a este punto en el que estamos, no podemos gastar los pocos ahorros que tenemos en repararla.
But at this point, we really can't spend the little bit of savings that we have to repair the trailers.
Porque vivimos esperando, con el corazón en este proyecto, esperando que lo aprueben.
So, we live with our heart in this project, hoping that you'll approve it.
Pero también tenemos una parte de nosotros que tiene que prever si esto no se aprueba.
But there's a part of us that still has to prepare in case it didn't get approved.
Y no podemos usar los pocos recursos que tenemos para seguir arreglando las trailers que ya están en condiciones. Todavía podemos vivir ahí, pero son trailers a las cuales ya no vale la pena invertir dinero en ellas.
So, we can't spend the few resources that we have on trailers that, I mean, you know, that we can continue to live there, but that don't merit a lot of investment.
Y de corazones, mis hijas, mi esposo y yo esperamos que este proyecto realmente se apruebe. Mi hija mayor, ella esperaba que para este año ya hubiera sido aprobado el proyecto. Siempre está con la ilusión y preguntando. Hoy que veníamos, me dice, "Mami, hay una reunión hoy. Hay que ir, porque quizás nos dan la llave de la nueva casa."
My heart, my children, and my spouse are really excited to have this approved and hope that it would be approved already. They've been saying, "Mom, you have to come to the next meeting, because maybe they'll give us the keys for our new house."
Y es difícil decirle, "No, aún no. Esto aún está..."
It's hard to tell them, "No, no, we're still waiting."
Y pues, sé que es difícil para las personas que tienen sus casas, sé los problemas que ellos están exponiendo.
I know it's difficult for the people with the houses who are describing some of the problems.
Sé que son cambios muy grandes, pero al final de cuentas, Iowa City está creciendo, igual que está creciendo todo Iowa.
I know that those are some big problems. I also know that Iowa City is growing, like a lot of other communities across Iowa.
Pardon me, I think I need to interrupt. You've been speaking for quite a long time. I wonder if you could just kind of draw it to a conclusion, please?
Permiso, no quiero interrumpir. Solo puedes llegar a una conclusión. Lo único es tratar de que, por favor, pues lleguemos a la conclusión y nos den ese apoyo que necesitamos para obtener las casas, que al final son mejor que las trailers.
So, the only conclusion is, please support and approve this plan that would give us better houses than the trailers that we have.
Great, thank you.
Gracias y buenas noches.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Nixon. I live at 802 Tranquil Bluff Trail. We are very new to this neighborhood, so we're very new to the project, and I think what I'm about to say maybe should have been said three years ago and might have been if other members of the community had been involved in this development from the start. I was very surprised at the public hearing in March that the cost of each modular home is going to be $200,000. And I understood, or I understand, that after 15 years, they can apply for a mortgage and buy the house for $66,000. That's wonderful. Except for it's going to be a mortgage on a 15-year-old modular house, which is not going to give them very much return for their money. So, I was curious, and I wondered, why it is that for $200,000, an actual house cannot be built and provided for these people so that when they come to buy their house and apply for a mortgage, they have a much better chance of getting the mortgage, and they will get a better return for their investment, just like everybody else in America does when they are trying to buy a house. So, that's one, my main question. And again, I realize I'm very late in this development, but that is a question. If we want to do affordable housing, let's make it true affordable housing and real housing, and not a manufactured home that is going to deteriorate. So, my other question is, or another question is, the guarantees that the manufactured homes are going to be maintained properly and adequately, because if they start to deteriorate, then it is going to affect the property values of the houses that are immediately adjacent to it, regardless of what has been said tonight. And you can see, when you come off the interstate, you can see how dilapidated these modular homes have become. I would also like to say that we have nothing at all against the rehousing of the community. And I am kind of upset that everybody who has spoken for the project is putting us as enemies, and we are not. Every single person who has spoken, we have all said, "We want them to be rehoused." It is the manner and the form of housing that we are concerned about, not them as people, or not the fact that they need a new house. My other concern is that we were told at the hearing in March that these trailers have been there since the '40s and '50s. And I am a bit concerned, because asbestos was used as a very common building material, and if these trailers are going to be demolished and there is asbestos in the building materials...
...town to come and do this. I think like a developer who come from outside and working hard with the resident to give them housing, I think that's kind of developer that I want to see in our community and will come then because they are bringing, they're really setting the bar high, the standard very high for other developer, whether they are from this community or they coming from other community to preserve and build affordable housing in our local community here. I think I will welcome, of course, you know, those kind of resident. I'm glad that the current developer are working like really side by side with a resident to implement affordable housing that we need. The resident are not only getting better, you know, like house, new houses, they are getting better housing. And I think that's something that we missing in this community and we need to have more affordable housing. Yes, many thing will change to the residence, doesn't gonna be look like before, but I think let us look at the big pictures. We are housing a lot people and we give them opportunity to have better housing. Some people talk about noise, a light. I don't think, you know, nothing again is a student, but those are not a student who gonna party all day. Those are just family like you and they have, they have kids, they work, most of them work two job, who will come tired, they will turn off their light at eight o'clock or nine o'clock like any typical family in this, in our community. I think that's not supposed to be like really a concern and why should they have noise? They are, they are a family who have kids and they also would like to be living, and also those people are very peaceful. I, you know, I didn't see any data showing that there is like police patrolling there or there is call for any negative thing there. I just believe there is many, many good things on this project. Yeah, it could be a concern of water and everything, traffic, a lot of people talk about traffic and also our mayor had mentioned that. I, I don't know anything about traffic, but I trust our traffic engineering. Say we'll take care of that and if they think there is problem, they should have let us know there is a problem. And I don't think since our traffic engineering provide like approve that, I don't, I'm not gonna take this as a concern. And yeah, there is like, I, I, I wanna make sure, you know, about the water, you know, for the idle wood and everything, I wanna make sure we have really good plan for that, no doubt. But I guess since this is a very good project and I just hope this is will move forward. Thank you.
I'm gonna reserve my comments, given that we have to continue the public hearing and that it's after 10 o'clock. I mean, it's obviously up to everybody else in the council what they want to do tonight, but I'm just, since we have to continue the public hearing, I'm gonna reserve my comments to our next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
We still have a few items on the agenda tonight.
We do. I just appreciate all the voices that came and spoke tonight. I really do appreciate it.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's the only frustration in not speaking is some of you may not come back at our next hearing, but.
But it is televised, so if you.
It is televised, that's correct.
I'm gonna reserve my comments as well, but you know, I do want us to embrace this process. I know it is not easy to come in and share your opinion sometimes through the unpopular opinions. I want to encourage you to continue to do that and to reach out to us because I want to make sure that we're a venue where all voices are heard and that we're really trying to, you know, collectively work together to make the community a better place. And so I'm gonna reserve the bulk of my comments for the next meeting, but I hope people come out and reach out to us and continue to express their concerns. And you know, any planning process is an imperfect process that we try to make better. So I'm looking forward to additional comments in a couple of weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Just as a correction because, and I will just make that comment, we normally meet on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. This month, we are meeting on the 23rd, we're meeting on the third Tuesday, so just, it's an odd schedule, so just to make people aware of that.
Okay, well, I need to say a few things and what I'm gonna say is sort of like opening a possibility, it's not shutting anything down. There's so much about the project I support and admire, but I do have a couple of suggestions and then a deeper concern. So the first suggestion is I think the city staff should be working with neighbors who live along Algonquin to see if they can resolve the concerns of those residents. I don't know if that's possible, but I think the effort should be made. Maybe it's already been made and I don't know about it. The second has to do with the people who live just south of the gas station, the proposed gas station. Likewise, it seems to me that if there's a desire on their part to have a sound barrier between the gas, between Forest View, well, between the gas station and those residences, I think that should be taken seriously as a possibility. And I can easily imagine how such a sound barrier could be constructed in a very attractive way. My deeper concern has to do with the climate action and adaptation stuff that I mentioned earlier. So as I've been, as I spent the last several days reading all this material, much of which is new to me in terms of the detail with regard to Forest View, not the big picture, but the detail. I feel as though I have dropped the ball in terms of relating this project to our carbon emission reduction plan. We have spent a lot of effort, a lot of time creating a climate action and adaptation plan. We adopted it last September. And given everything I personally have said publicly about the importance of climate action, I think it would be profoundly hypocritical of me to fully support this proposal as it currently stands. From a climate action and adaptation point of view, the project is from only, from that point of view, it's a big step in the wrong direction. Let me explain because I want to open up a possibility here. It's profoundly dependent on and reinforces the use of fossil fuel powered cars and trucks. Traffic, it's all a major topic of conversation, traffic, 15,000 vehicles a day, traffic. Okay. Secondly, it removes most of the existing woodland and the shading, cooling and CO2 absorption and oxygen producing benefits the woodlands provide. I don't know what the percentage is, I'd like to have a real clear restatement, for me personally anyhow, about what percentage of the existing woodland will be removed that affects both all those kinds of benefits, but also wildlife. And third, it includes a large amount of paving and roof cover. Okay, with that in mind, I want to explore, I would kind of asking the developing, development team to consider the willingness to take, to instill a few changes in the plan. And if you agree, this, these would become another, I don't know, part of the conditional rezoning agreement. So anyhow, what I have in mind, and this would need some exploration, is with regard to auto dependence, to take, to make sure the project contains actions that will reduce the number of, the expected number of trips made to and from the project without harming the project at all. So what could be done? Maybe a shuttle bus, time to meet the city bus, with the shuttle bus going through the development as a whole and down Algonquin and down to Forest Foster Road and up Laura Drive and so on. Or maybe having the city bus go up into the project and go through the project and down Algonquin and out to the Peninsula Development and so on. So that's one thing. A second is including electric vehicle recharging stations in the development as a planned part of the development. There's a lot of parking up there, surface parking. I'd really like to see EV stations incorporated into many or all of those surface parking lots and certainly be a part of a gas station. If we're gonna move away from gasoline, fossil fuels, et cetera, we've got to set, we've got to set a marker out there. And this is such a big and important project, we have to do it better, I think, in that sense. Another thing having to do with the point I'm making is I think we need to ensure that the project contains energy efficient lighting for streets and parking areas. I think they have to be required and that all lighting should be downward facing. You know, it makes a huge difference if you illuminate the whole area versus having downward facing lighting. And the downward facing lighting is vastly better for all sorts of reasons. Lastly, and this has nothing directly to do with this project, with regard to any future large scale development projects, I believe we need to amend the city code to require the staff and applicant to consider the effects of the proposed project on future carbon emissions and the, and to take actions that will help us achieve our carbon emission goals. This is such a big project. It's, and I've said so much about climate action over the past three years that I think we really need to push the envelope. And I think this is a great opportunity for you, Eddie, for Kevin, for Blackbird as a whole. And I think each of the things I mentioned could be incorporated, but there might be other things that could be done as well. That's all I need to say. So does anybody else want to say anything else?
Shouldn't we, yeah, shouldn't we defer until next time?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, yeah. Okay, so it'd be good to have a motion to continue the public hearing and first consideration to April the 23rd.
So moved.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Teague. This is, is this an all in favor type of a voice vote?
Uh, yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Your second.
Susan's ready to go on for two hours, right?
Whatever.
Maybe I should have some coffee, Rock.
My god.
My girl have exemption order on, he's been fixing me.
What's the record?
I don't know.
We're gonna leap right into evidence here in a second.
I'll try to move these on as quickly as possible.
Oh, next one's expedited.
Yeah, I think so, and we don't have, well, I've gotta read this stuff.
I don't.
My girl have exemption tomorrow, I mean, Jim texting me, when are you gonna come? It's gonna happen, like, couldn't understand the mess.
Well, I'm glad we didn't go through all 120.
Okay, in the interest of time, I think I'll try to move us right along to item 11C.
Jim, can we get a motion for correspondence?
Oh, could I have a motion to accept correspondence pertaining to what, 11A and B?
11B.
11B?
So moved.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by?
Bruce.
Seconded by Teague. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item 11C, rezoning 2130 Muscatine Avenue. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.155 acres of property located at 2130 Muscatine Avenue from community commercial to high density single family residential. It's a second consideration, the staff has requested expedited action.
I move with the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed, to be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Taylor. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11D, Rollins Pass Preliminary Platte. This is a resolution approving the preliminary platte and sensitive areas development plan of Rollins Pass, Iowa City, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Cole. Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sussman, NDS, I'll go through this rather quickly, less complex than the ones we've been dealing with this evening, should go fairly quickly. This is a proposed preliminary platte for land to be known as Rollins Pass. It's approximately eight acres at the southwest corner of Lower West Branch Roads, Southeast and Taft Avenue, Southeast. It was recently rezoned in August of this year to a combination of medium density, single family residential RS8 and low density multifamily RM12 with five conditions. Those five conditions are triggered at various points in the oncoming development, land development process. Some of them are things that we need to be addressed at preliminary platte and have been, and some of them are things that come along later in the process with final plattes. Staff is satisfied that the applicant is making the progress that they need to make on those conditions as they go along. This is the preliminary platte and sensitive areas development plan that has been submitted. As you know, preliminary plattes contain some of the details regarding how lots layout, the future public streets, where utilities are and the presence and treatment of sensitive areas, also grading is considered. On this site, to the west, there is a creek that is considered the only real sensitive areas that needed to be studied. There is a new public street system to be built to connect across that corner, fronted with single family lots on the south side and then a larger lot reserved on the northeast side for future multifamily development. This is a concept plan that was expressed as part of the rezoning and as you can see, it closely mirrors and as was conditioned is required to be shown very similarly as they go through the plating process. This exhibit shows the footprints of the future townhomes on the larger lot to the northeast corner of the development. Staff has reviewed the traffic access and street design as part of this preliminary platte proposal. There are sidewalks shown on both sides of all new public streets. There's also a private trail connection that's contemplated as part of the development. The developer is committed to installation of a bridge over Ralston Creek to allow for a connection from the internal street system of their development to the public park system and trail system across the creek. There are also requirements for open space, both private open space and public open space. Those are being addressed appropriately at this time. There is an outlot where some private open space will be provided along Ralston Creek. There's also another outlot being set aside for future development. The applicant is committed to paying a fee in lieu in place of the public open space requirement and the appropriate stream buffers are being observed along Ralston Creek. There was a wetland delineation report, study presented and evaluated and there are no additional sensitive areas on this lot that need to be addressed. Regarding stormwater and sanitary sewers, stormwater management is going to be provided through an underground piping system. There will be a final stormwater plan that's required with final platte and reviewed by city staff. Sanitary sewers will cross, across the Ralston Creek and that provides an opportunity for that trail connection as well. As far as next steps in the development process, as I mentioned, this has already gone through the rezoning, so we're at the highlighted step in orange there, which is the preliminary platte and sensitive areas step. If this were to pass, they would be coming back to you by resolution for eventual consideration of a final platte and then sensitive areas would be evaluated and site plans as needed for multifamily would be reviewed by staff. The Planning Commission at its March 21st meeting did vote to recommend approval of this application to by a vote of six to zero. Staff has reviewed it and concurs with that recommendation based on our analysis of the proposed project. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Danielle?
Yes. I must have missed this when this came before us on rezoning. Why are we having another access, if I'm reading this, interpreting this map right, why are we having another access point onto Taft? I mean, we've got, is it Lower West Branch Road and then we've got one coming out of the development? I mean, I thought one of our real efforts here was gonna be to minimize access points because eventually that'll get paved and be truck traffic. So I'm just kind of surprised that we've got another access point so close to Lower West Branch Road.
I believe the intention was that for the number of units that it would be served by this development, that two ways in and two ways, two ways out was important. The spacing from the intersection has been reviewed and we're aware of the improvements that would be made to Taft and engineering felt that was acceptable spacing on Taft to allow for another connection. There would be 21 units of townhomes on that lot. They're not kind of shown in this footprint here, so there would be quite a bit of development and so it seemed appropriate to have multiple connections. There's also a stub to the south eventually too, as you can see on this map, that would not be developed at this time because there's a lot in the county right there that's not intending to be redeveloped anytime soon.
I hope we continue to be very cautious about additional curb cuts onto Taft.
Any other questions for Danielle? Thank you. Counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11E, I think, no, 12, item 12. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance, Northgate, a resolution author, well, author, this is a resolution authorizing conveyance of auditor's parcel 2008020 to Bylin Properties LLC. I'm gonna open the public hearing. I don't see anybody who wants to speak. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Sully. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, 628 South Dubuque Sewer Easement. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a quit claim deed to Delray Ridge LP to release a sewer easement on 628 South Dubuque Street. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Ron.
Good evening, Ron, Kentucky Public Works Director. This, currently on this site, there is a sanitary sewer that runs through the middle of the developable site. This will be where the Delray project will be. Part of their development will relocate that sewer running to the west and down Clinton Street. This basically releases our rights and of that sewer's location. Pretty straightforward.
Great, thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Taylor. Discussion.
I think this is a really great project and whatever we can do to get it going is good.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 14, University City Sale, 522 North Dodge Street. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of a single family home located at 522 North Dodge Street. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Cole. Discussion. I want to say I live two blocks away from this house. It is directly across the street from Horace Mann Elementary and a block away from North Market Square Park. It's been a real treat seeing the renovation of 522 North Dodge and I easily, I can easily imagine how it would be a great place for a family with a small child or a couple of small children or whatever to move in and watch their children safely cross Dodge Street, go to Matt Horace Mann and then move on to Southeast Junior High and City High or whatever, whatever happens to them. So I'm really pleased to be able to support this.
I just want to ask you a question, Tracy. When, when, when the university sale come by us like this, does this means we just approve it for sale and you're going to advertise it or this is means the sale has been done?
No, we have an accepted purchase offer, so this is allowing us to actually close on the property.
Okay.
So.
Oh, this is for closing on the property?
Yep, so someone has made a purchase offer and we're willing to accept it.
Sure, okay, good to know, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15, Highway One Trail, Sunset Street to Mormon Trek Boulevard. This is a resolution awarding contract and authorizing the city engineer to sign and the city clerk to attest a contract for construction of the Highway One Trail, Sunset Street to Mormon Trek Boulevard. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by, by Sully. Discussion. Ron, did you want to talk about this?
As you can see from the comment that we had nine bidders on this project, so it was very popular amongst the contracting community, which then also resulted in a very good bid on this project. One thing I do want to point out, which is unique with, well, is unique with this project but won't be on our federal projects as we move forward, the requirements now from the DOT is electronic signing of contracts. With this, we're gonna have the city engineer sign off on all of our federal projects. They're used to the system. Our elected officials won't have to go through the process of getting electronic signature. So in the future, you'll see with our federalized projects that the city engineer will be authorized to sign off on the contracts.
Okay, good deal.
How many miles of trail is this gonna be or what's the length of it gonna be?
Yeah, I'm not certain the length on it, it's probably around a mile.
Okay.
Between Sunset and Mormon Trek, roughly would be that mile road, so.
So you're gonna be out there on the trail, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else want to comment on this? No. All right, council members, discussion?
Well, always pleased to see that trail system fill out, so little by little, we're getting it done.
Yeah. Okay, hearing no further discussion, roll call please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 16, Gilbert Street Intersection Improvements. This is a resolution awarding the contract, sorry, awarding contract and authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest a contract for construction of the Gilbert Street Intersection Improvements Project. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Teague. Discussion. Ron, did you want to comment on this?
I notice it's. Unfortunately, with every good bid, there, there comes some bids that we're not so good on. So we had three bidders on this project. We had an engineer's estimate of 960,000 and the low bid was roughly 1.3 million. This project is really integral with the Chauncey redevelopment going on and the development work in the area here to get this work done in this construction season. We've looked at the bids, the bids don't, I mean, with, you know, the low bid was 1.3 million, the high bid was 1.5. I mean, the, this is what the project's gonna cost to bid this. I don't believe that we'll see a reduction in a bid price if we would rebid this project. A few things that we did add on to the project and maybe we didn't update the budgeting side of it, we added lighting all the way along Washington Street from Van Buren, all the way tying up to Lynn, so we'll, we'll update the lighting in the corridor. And then along with that, we are also updating both of the signals at the intersections of College and out here at Washington on Gilbert Street. So with that and having a shortfall, we did go back through some of our annual projects and were able to use some of those dollar amounts there, using $300,000 from our traffic signal annual project, roughly $100,000, $130,000 from our payment rehabilitation program. There'll be some patching that'll go on along Gilbert Street.
for sale and you're going to advertise it or this means the sale has been done?
No, we have an accepted purchase offer, so this is allowing us to actually close on the property.
Okay.
So—
Oh, this is for closing on the property?
Yep. So someone has made a purchase offer and we're willing to accept it.
Sure. Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 16, Gilbert Street Intersection Improvements. This is a resolution awarding the contract—sorry, awarding contract and authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest a contract for construction of the Gilbert Street Intersection Improvements Project. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Wolf? Second.
Moved by Salee, second by Teague. Discussion. Ron, did you want to comment on this? I noticed it's—
Unfortunately, with every good bid, there comes some bids that we're not so good on. So we had three bidders on this project. We had an engineer's estimate of $960,000 and the low bid was roughly $1.3 million. This project is really integral with the Chauncey redevelopment going on and the development work in the area here to get this work done in this construction season. We've looked at the bids. The bids don't—I mean, with, you know, the low bid was $1.3 million, the high bid was $1.5. I mean, this is what the project's going to cost to bid this. I don't believe that we'll see a reduction in a bid price if we would rebid this project. A few things that we did add on to the project and maybe we didn't update the budgeting side of it, we added lighting all the way along Washington Street from Van Buren, all the way tying up to Lynn, so we'll update the lighting in the corridor. And then along with that, we are also updating both of the signals at the intersections of College and out here at Washington on Gilbert Street. So with that and having a shortfall, we did go back through some of our annual projects and were able to use some of those dollar amounts there, using $300,000 from our traffic signal annual project, roughly $100,000, $130,000 from our payment rehabilitation program. There'll be some patching that'll go on along Gilbert Street. And then there'll also be some curb ramps that we'll be replacing, obviously, with the intersection improvements. So we included $70,000 from that program. So that would—that covers the shortfall as far as the budgeting goes, so it'll be road use tax funds that we use to fill the gap.
I just want to ask you, yeah, as you said, the estimate—the engineering estimate and the better estimates is really like way different. Like, did you find out where the difference come from and why your estimation like way low than the—
When we looked at it, it appeared the biggest—one of the biggest differences was in the water main cost, so for whatever reason, the trenching number that we have in this corridor is a little bit more expensive, almost double what we normally would see. And part of that, I think, is just the tight constraints that we're in within the corridor. And then we had a look—we missed a little bit on some of the lighting stuff, so I think those are the two biggest things that we saw as differences.
Oh, you mean like after you reviewed, you see it's like—
Right. Seeing what the engineer had estimated those items as versus what the actual bid was on the—you know, the contractor actually bid, those were the two items that were the big one, that were kind of the outliers for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else want to address this? Seeing no one.
Roll call. That was quick.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Teague. Discussion. What, repealing dancing? I can't believe it. Whose idea was this? That's enough discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 20, Announcement of Vacancies. New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Ooh, make that two vacancies, no? One to—hold on.
You went at large.
Yeah, three—no, no, no. No, four of them. Four vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Historic Preservation Commission. One of them is an at-large position, one is a Brown Street position, one is a Summit Street position, and the fourth is a Jefferson Street position. And we have two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Housing and Community Development Commission and three vacancies to fill six-year terms on the Library Board of Trustees. Lastly, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term effective upon appointment to the Telecommunications Commission due to a resignation. Applicants for—applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 14, 2019. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, second by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Announcement of Vacancies. Previous, we have two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for East College Street, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on—for the Jefferson—on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street position. That was included in the one I just read about new vacancies.
Yeah. I don't think we've ever come—I don't think we've ever filled the Jefferson.
There's like one or two people live in the district.
That's like the end of the first real term.
So is simply noting the error sufficient or do we need to—
Well, it's—it's different terms. The one under previous is 16 through 19. The new one is 19 through—
Yeah, but they both apply to the Jefferson Street District and there's only one position on the Jefferson Street District.
Right.
Well, okay. You all know what you're doing. Okay. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item 23, city—no, I'm sorry. Item 22. Gustav, do you or Austin want to say anything?
I'll keep this short. So my name's Gustav Stewart, student liaison, if you didn't know. But just wanted to let you know about one event that's coming up that UISG is hosting and that is, excuse me, the First Generation Summit. And the idea—this summit is the second. Last year was the first. And essentially, it holds information sessions, resource, network for keynote speakers. And the idea behind this is generally to kind of celebrate the first-generation identity for students at University of Iowa, that about 20% to 25% of students at the University of Iowa are first-generation. And community members are welcome to come, university students, faculty, staff. Yeah, thank you.
And you said, when is that?
Oh, I forgot the time. April 13th, Saturday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And if you're interested, I can send you more info to register for it and whatnot.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Gustav. Okay. Which gets us to item 23, City Council Information. Maz, we'll start with you and move to the right.
Information, not like reporting on committee, okay. I guess—I just come out from Tunisia. It is a really beautiful place and I—we met with—I went there with another nine elected official across the country. They went with me. They are from—I met people from California, elected official like City Council and Board of Supervisor from Michigan and from Washington DC, from New York, City Council. And interestingly, I learned about—even City Council is different in the United States. I wasn't know that. I sort of like all the City Council look like our City Council, but it is really interesting to know that some City Council, like I'm—like really, we are fortunate to have a city many years. Some—even another City Council, they don't have a city many years. And the mayor is like the one who control everything. And doesn't matter, like, you know, how the mayor—like, it just depend on who is the mayor is, so that will drive the—you know, the community. But I'm glad that we have a city many years and we have a council like this. And when I told them about like our councils and the thing—like how things work, they really were exciting to hear that. And also the Tunisian, they learn a lot from us because they are forming all the—this is for the service time. They elect City Council members and, you know, government's position. It used to be like being appointed by the president and the people who work for him. But right now, it become election, people like run it and—and it is really—they still building on like how things work because the over there—that's new elected, you know, City Council. Before, it used to be like the—the—the staff like running everything and those people who appointed, they don't have any voice, but now they are like trying to take over the power to the City Council, so the staff will be working under them. It is really interesting that they ask us a lot question about things work in the United States and we've been telling them. And they will be here on September in Washington DC for 10 days to Xikin. I'm just hoping if they can come to Iowa City and like attend a City Council. I'm going to invite them and see if they able to come and just attend a City Council meeting and see how things work here. But that was a really very big deal for me for coming back and I don't have anything else to report on.
I'm really thrilled about it, Maz. It was a great opportunity for you.
Yes. Ice weather and nice food, nice view.
Oh, yeah. The Mediterranean climate. I remember that. Rockne?
Three super quick announcements. There are applications now available for the affordable housing apartments at Augusta Place, so I encourage people that are interested in that, who meet the income guidelines, to look up iowacity.org forms Augusta Place and so they can make that application. The second thing is, it is springtime, it is gardening season, so if they're interested in getting a community garden plot, they can apply through the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center or ic.gov.org/activityregistration. So that's something people should look into. And finally, there's a ton of really good STEM events that have been happening lately for math and engineering and art. And this is actually a STEAM event that will take place at the Robert A. Lee Education Center, September, April 7th, 2019, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. There'll be a lot of great activities and it is free, so it's a really fun event and I encourage people to attend. Pauline and I just had a good conversation as well with Nancy Byrd. It's always good to get in contact with a downtown district doing a lot of great things and looking forward to see what they have in store this summer.
Well, Jim and I also met with Nancy and I forget the—her assistant, but anyway, Malcolm? Anyway, he was—he was sort of making sure everything that we exchanged was documented. So that was interesting. Beyond that, I—you had mentioned, Jim, at the beginning of the meeting, the success of the women's basketball team. It was really kind of fun watching that ride, being—being on that ride, attended several of the games and, you know, it was really—the team is such a team-oriented—team. You know, the way they play with, you know, the assist ratios, all the—you know, that kind of data, they're—they're just a pleasure to watch because they play as a team and they had great success this year.
The Shelter House Book Sale was this weekend and it was very successful. Large, great turnout of folks and I saw a figure, I think, 27,000 they raised over the weekend, which—which was very good. Coming up tomorrow afternoon, the Iowa City Police Department Ceremony. I usually love going to that, but I'll be tied up, taking field trip. Rockne with the—some Longfellow Longhorn sixth graders to the Putnam Museum, so I won't be able to make it to that, but I will make it back hopefully to—for the NPL meeting, which we have tomorrow afternoon. April 4th, you—I believe, isn't that this week, the Civil Rights? Your folks hadn't mentioned that. Maybe you were going to mention it, Jim. I'll let you talk about that then. That's—that's tomorrow afternoon. Looking forward to that. And I was disappointed that folks weren't here to accept the proclamation for the Delta Sigma Theta Day. I'll be honored to present the proclamation to them this Saturday. They're having a parade from at 10 o'clock on Iowa Avenue. It's the largest African-American sorority in the country and they're actually celebrating being chartered 100 years ago, so it's a pretty major milestone for them, so that will be exciting. And also Saturday, I'm excited to go to Ballet at Hancher presented by the American Ballet Theater.
Malcolm? Anyway, he was, he was sort of making sure everything that we exchanged was documented. So that was interesting. Beyond that, I, you had mentioned, Jim, at the beginning of the meeting, the success of the women's basketball team. It was really kind of fun watching that ride, being, being on that ride, attended several of the games, and, you know, it was really, the team is such a team-oriented, team. You know, the way they play with, you know, the assist ratios, all the, you know, that kind of data, they're, they're just a pleasure to watch because they play as a team, and they had great success this year.
Nothing. The Shelter House book sale was this weekend, and it was very successful, large, great turnout of folks, and I saw a figure, I think, 27,000 they raised over the weekend, which was very good. Coming up tomorrow afternoon, the Iowa City Police Department Ceremony. I usually love going to that, but I'll be tied up, taking field trip, Rockney, with the, some Longfellow Longhorn sixth graders to the Putnam Museum, so I won't be able to make it to that, but I will make it back hopefully to, for the NPL meeting, which we have tomorrow afternoon, April 4th, you, I believe, isn't that this week, the Civil Rights? You folks hadn't mentioned that, maybe you were going to mention it, Jim. I'll let you talk about that then, that's tomorrow afternoon, looking forward to that.